You got it. Hello, good evening. We're going to call this Board of Education meeting to order. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you so much. So great seeing so many people here tonight, and I think people are starting to join us online. So let's get started. Is that me? Sorry about that. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Christina. I see a second there by Ms. Kostin. Okay, all in favor, since we're all in person, we can just do a show of hands. Thank you. That passes eight zero. Okay, moving on to my favorite part of being on the Board of Education, the student and staff recognitions, and we have a lot tonight. I think it's going to be a combination of in-person and online. As a result, Dr. Jones and I have been signing a lot of certificates, which we're really excited about, but since there'll be some confusion handing it out tonight, or obviously hard to hand it out virtually, we will deliver all of these to the high school tomorrow. Or assuming we don't have a snow day, kidding. Okay. So with that, first up is our honoring, our Director of Athletics, Gus Lundine. Is he here? See online? And I know he's being honored by Mr. Mayo and Mr. Meskers. I see Mr. Meskers online, and I think Mr. Mayo's online. Let me get my participant.
I just promoted Ralph.
Great. So that means Mr. Mayo goes first, but let's see, do you see Gus?
I'm not seeing Gus online.
Well, because he does the next recognitions, exactly. Right. He's not here, right? To the National Merit. Yeah. Well, Ralph, did you, can you find Gus? Otherwise, we're going to have to skip ahead three to National Merit, because Gus is.
The, the head coaches are panelists currently for the, for the next two, so they could handle their own.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Mayo, hold on a second. We're going to come back to you. We are going to pivot, and instead, let's honor the girls volleyball state championship team. So can we have Mr. Lappam?
Hi, good evening. Can you guys hear me all right? Thumbs up? Yeah, okay. Thank you to the Board of Education for recognizing our student athletes this evening. I would like to join in congratulating Coach Heller, his coaching staff, and the girls swim and dive team for another dominating season in the pool, as they always do. And personally, I know we can't find him right now. I would like to thank my friend Gus Lundine for the 17 years of being our Athletic Director and supporting the many sports and athletes that have participated at Greenwich High School. Now, on to the volleyball team. The volleyball team started out the season ranked number one in the state, which put a lot of pressure on us, but we finished the year and stayed number one the entire season. The team won the FCAC Western Division with a 15-1 record and won the FCAC Championship, beating Ward, Trumbull, and Darien in the final. The team cruised through the state tournament, beating Bristol Central, Wilton, Darien again, and Fairfield Ludlow in the final. We beat them 3-0. Our final record was 26-1. As far as some accolades for the players, Leona Sarkisian was recently named as the Gatorade Player of the Year for Connecticut. Leona and Adele Satu were both recognized as AVCA All-Americans, the youngest and the brightest. They were Connecticut All-State Members and First Team All-FCAC Players. Additional players Maggie Salibi, Lucia Spaniel, and Sophie Jones also received All-FCAC recognition. And just by the way, last year, we did finish undefeated in a shortened season due to the pandemic, and that team did not get to get to be recognized. But it is now my honor and pleasure to announce the players, coaches, and manager of the Greenwich Cardinal Volleyball Team. I don't know if any of them are there. I think most of them are virtual. So I will just go through the list. If anyone's there, stand up and wave. Our manager, Ben Bowers, Joy Hudra, Hannah Fisher, Isabella Ursig, Skylar Wilson, Jennifer Andia, Grace Darnow, Lana Corson, Madeline Cooper, Haley Dionis, Cassidy Bonney, Catherine Ford, Lucia Spaniel, Maggie Salibi, Captain Sophie Jones, Captain Leanna Sarkisian, and Captain Adele Satju. I'd also like to recognize our coaches, Coach Megan Puff, Coach Eric Robinson, and Coach Olivia Trainor, who did an outstanding job as a fairly, a pretty new crew of coaches. So thank you for the recognition. We appreciate it. And best to everyone.
Kathleen, can I ask Coach Lappam a question?
I think you can.
How did I know this was coming?
Coach Lappam, I, I do have a question. Could you tell me how many years you've been coaching girls volleyball at Greenwich High School?
That would be 29, Joe.
29 years, and you spent a couple of decades, 20 years, coaching the boys rugby program as well?
That is correct. That would be 49 banquets with a lot of chicken dinners, Joe.
Steve Lappam.
I am stepping down, so I do want to let you know that.
I'm very hard, sorry to hear that. I was going to say a few more nice things about you, if that's okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Steve Lappam, Coach Lappam, is an unsung hero. He's been coaching thousands of students at Greenwich High School for the last almost 30 years. He's influenced these kids in an incredibly positive way. I had the pleasure and honor of taking over the Greenwich High School Rugby Team from Steve Lappam after 20 years of, of service to our community. The shoes were huge that I had to jump into, but I hope I filled them okay. Steve has affected so many kids in a positive way. He just, it does not get recognized enough, because every season just keeps going by, and he's a perfectionist when it comes to his craft. I am very proud, and I've known Steve for about 23 years. I'm very proud to call him a friend, and I don't call a lot of people friends. I call Steve Lapp a friend of mine. Thank you for all you do, Steve.
Thank you, Joe. Same to you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Steve, and congratulations to this wonderful team. Okay, next up is girls swimming and diving, also state champions, and can we have Mr. Heller, please?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brendan Heller, and this is my first year coaching Greenwich High School Swimming and Diving, so I'm, I got 28 years to catch up on Coach Lappam, but congratulations to the volleyball program as well. I'm going to keep it pretty brief, because I have a large roster here to recognize with our swim program, but I wanted to thank Gus Lundine. I know he's not on the call right now, but in the entire Greenwich community for the support and overwhelming support that it was this entire fall season, and we were very successful in the sense that no, no one beat us. It was a perfect season. We had several state champions. We have several All-Americans, and we dominated. So for, for me, my first year, this was, this was a privilege to lead this team, and I look forward to hopefully many more years of success coaching Greenwich High School. So I'd first like to thank my assistant coaches, Kevin Thompson and Aaron Ritz, and now I'll get into the recognition of all these varsity athletes here for our swimming and diving team. If you're there, please stand up and identify yourself. If you're on the Zoom call here, congratulations on a great season. So for our freshmen, we have Senna Boskert, Michelle Weisler, Garan Finns, Emma Stamen. Sophomores, Sophie Wang, Peyton Foster, Sydney G., Annabelle Guanera, Ava Bain, Tess Ferno, Julia Costello, Helena Kennedy, Natsu Nishizawa. For our juniors, Daisy Decker, Sabina Sack, Matilda Mancini, Samantha Ings. And for our senior class, we have nine. Captain Katerina Lee, Captain Isabella Malco, Captain Emerson Robinson, Captain Esme Merrill, as well as Sophia Sitchnick, Olivia Knapp, Paulina Finns, Evangeline Norman, Olivia Bain, and Daniela Pampa. For our divers, we had Mackenzie Newey, Ellie Scharf, Javier Garcia, Francesca Kim, Annie Bengal, and Lauren Priest. So congratulations to all the members of our team, and thank you again to the community for your overwhelming support, and hopefully looking forward to years of continued success for all these student athletes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Heller. This is known to be quite a program, and we're excited that you're leading it.
Thank you.
Okay, have we found Mr. Lundine? Excellent, there he is. All right, that's the way to go out and retire, Gus, is to make sure you show up a little bit late. That's why you're heading to retirement, right? You can relax.
My apologies, please.
No worries. All right, Mr. Mayo, we let you go first. You're on mute, Ralph.
Yeah, Mr. Lundine, he thought he was going to get away with this, and he's the type of person that does, shies away from the spotlight. This is very difficult for him to be honored in this public banter, but no one deserves more credit for the achievements of the athletic program at Greenwich High School over the last 18 years than Gus does. Gus is behind the scenes. He's always fixing things that are, that have, that always seem to go wrong all the time, and he fixes them, and nobody knows about it. He supports his coaches. He support, he cares deeply about his student athletes. He is just someone that you would want around your, your children at all times. He's the, and he is also, I have to say this, one of my best friends in the world. I've known him for over 30 years, and I am going to miss him a great deal, as are the students, student athletes, and the coaches of Greenwich High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you can speak, Gus, we would also like Mr. Meskers, State Representative Meskers, to share a few words about you. You guys see him or not? Okay, while I'm texting him, can I have a, I imagine Mr. Kelly's going to want to interject something, so maybe I can give the floor to you.
Thank you for asking. Gus, I hope you don't mind me saying a few things about you. I met Gus in 2007 as a parent of student athletes. My, several of my kids played multiple sports at the high school, and I met at Gus as a parent. I then worked for Gus for 10 years, and it was a very interesting 10 years. We didn't always agree on everything, but we were certainly willing to listen. He was willing to listen. We had great discussions on a lot of topics, and I had the pleasure and honor of working with Gus over the last two, two and a half years in a capacity where we worked on Cardinal Stadium together and a number of other things. Gus has a very strong moral compass, which I found to be one of his really, really strong features. He, he's always fair. He has a lot of competing interests in his job over the last 17 or 18 years, and in those competing interests, he found a way of being fair to everybody. Everybody walked away, not always happy, but no one thought that anyone got a better treatment than they got when comparing how they did when talking to Gus. And the most important thing I felt was, was a key feature, something that I share in common with him, was Gus absolutely 100% of the time had the interest of the kids at, in, in forefront of everything he did. And, and that's something we shared, and that's how come we were able to work together so closely over the years in those three different capacities. If, if being an A.D. was a sport, Gus would be the state champion.
Kathleen, can I add on something to that? Kathleen, could I add something to that?
Absolutely.
I, I just want to let everybody that's viewing tonight know that Mr. Lundine's a member of the FCAC Hall of Fame, which there's very few members of that club at the high school, and he is one of them. And as well as leading Greenwich High School to be named the top athletic program in Connecticut several times over the last 17 years. So Gus Gus cares so much, and it's, he was up at that stadium, as Joe Kelly pointed out, every day. I thought, I kept telling him, that's not your house, Gus, but that's how he treated it when it was being built. He treated it as if it was going to be his home, and he wanted it to be special for the athletes of Greenwich High School. So just wanted to get, say that about my, my friend and now retiree, Gus Lundine.
All right. I haven't heard back from Mr. Meskers, but that just means that maybe, Gus, we can get him to honor you at the Capitol. But why don't we turn it over to you? Can you say a few words?
I'd be more than happy to. First of all, thank you very, very much, members of the board, Dr. Jones, Ralph, Mayo. Thank you so much for sharing some very kind words. Ralph is correct. I do tend to try to take a step back and let the student athletes and coaches and teams of Greenwich High School deserve be able to be recognized for all their successes, and what they deserve, and be only out in front of them when they need me to be to defend or support them. So I really do thank you for this recognition. It was certainly not necessary. I think just being able to be called the Athletic Director at Greenwich High School for the last 17 years is certainly enough of an honor that I really don't think that I need much more than that. I, I will really miss the people of Greenwich, Greenwich High School, all our coaches, teachers, administrative staff there, the custodians, the folks that take care of our fields, you know, the list is endless. All those people that have made our athletic program really second to none, and one that I will always regard very, in a very special place in my heart. So again, thank you so, so much. I really do appreciate it, and I certainly will be following the Cardinals. I won't go away that easily. I'll always be there rooting for them, and, and making sure that our athletic program continues to do all the things that we have felt are so, so, so important, and it's just not the wins and losses. It's, it's all the other things that I think our kids do such a great job, and our coaches do such a great job with, and providing such a fantastic image of our community through athletics. So thank you very much. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Gus. Sorry that I didn't get to have any of my children there with, with you there, but I know that you certainly left a legacy. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
Next up, we will turn to a final group of recognitions, a very important one, Ms. Nadell.
Okay, I am here. I'm, I just need to be, get my video started by mic. Hello, everybody. Greetings from my work at home. I am very pleased to have this opportunity to honor the accomplishments of a very select group of Greenwich High School seniors. The mission of the National Merit Scholarship Corporation is to recognize the academically talented students of the United States. I'm going to begin our recognition with our semifinalists, who are in especially strong candidate pool this year, and it is very likely that they will be named finalists later on this school year. We very much appreciate the hard work and dedication to excellence that all of these students we're recognizing this evening have exhibited as members of the Greenwich High School community, and we appreciate that they bring welcome and positive recognition to our school and to the town of Greenwich. I'm going to begin by calling the names of the students who were semifinalists in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Competition. From Bella House, we have Ella Moore and Eduardo Suarez. From Clark House, Charles Adorni, Lucy Bai, and Stephen Blank. From Folsom House, Thomas Bodson, Benjamin Shi, Patrick Sullivan, Calista Wolf, Joanna Zhang. And from Sheldon House, Benjamin Cooper. Next up, we have our Greenwich High School commended students in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. From Bella House, we have Eva Anderson, Adam Kaufman, Anna Weixner, and Nicole Nguyen. From Canter House, we have Margot Delaney, Joelle Jensen, Pretti Kura, Matthew McCoo. From Clark House, we have Santiago Borrego, Garcia Concho, Nima Gupta, Arsh Jane, Bryce Metallos, Caitlin Skamen, Victor Stroy, Alicia Tang, Cecile Whittle, Caroline Yu, and Justin Zeig. From Folsom House, we have Michaela Browning, Emily Daplin, Alexander Ignitev, Alexa Nakaneishi, Luke Rutkowski, Javier Sarah, and Charles Zolin. From Sheldon House, we have Bennett Chung, Alexandra Fenaroli, Andrew Lowit, Esme Merrill, Jean Newwald, Rachel Rosier, Daniel Ruel, and Rohan Submaranian. Congratulations to our commended students. Next, we have three individual recognition programs, and all of these students are designated scholars. In the College Board National Indigenous Recognition Program, designated scholar from Folsom House is Kiana Jennings. In the College Board National African-American Recognition Program, our designated scholars from Clark House are Skylar Scavo, and from Sheldon House, Kwame Boateng. And then we have our College Board National Hispanic Recognition Program Designated Scholars. From Bella House, Jordan Cervantes, Dominique Isaacs, Sophia Jansen, Natalia Steglitz. From Canter House, Isabella Latuda, Carolina Rivera, Victoria Rivera. From Clark House, Isabel Harper, Alastair Wilson. And from Folsom House, Carlos Conejo, Sebastian Lopez, Javier Sarah, and Noah Weinberg. Those are all of our National Merit students, and thank you, students, again for making us look good. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. That's an impressive number of National Merit scholars. Thank you so much, Ms. Nadell.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we are turning to the public hearing. Unfortunately, I hear Kwame is sick, and so my understanding is that Sean Murza and Javi Sarah are going to speak with us tonight. I don't, oh, there they are, sorry. Yeah, come on down. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board, and meeting attendees. I'm Javi Sarah, Senior Class President at Greenwich High School. In a few days, students will sit down in their classrooms and undertake a seemingly ancient task, midterm exams. After a two-year hiatus, these cumulative assessments are back at GHS, and students cannot be more terrified. In the buildup to exams, student government presented the GHS administration with a midterm proposal, from which several accommodations were accepted. These included a flexible waiting system and a Block 1 through 8 review day. Essentially, each midterm will count as normal or as half of the usual waiting, depending on which is more beneficial to each student. Overall, the student government is grateful for Mr. Mayo's open ears and pleased that our input was implemented, but students are still overwhelmingly disappointed and anxious with high levels of stress that the current learning environment has induced. With rapidly spreading Omicron and snow days and delays, learning at GHS in recent weeks has been difficult and disrupted. This has left classes far behind in their curriculum timeline and forced teachers to accelerate work in an effort to catch up. Students are overwhelmed with their increasingly demanding workloads. Last Thursday was the final day for marking Period 2 tests to be administered and projects and essays to be due. Such a deadline was something student government was a strong proponent of. However, this was before we missed so much class time. In practice, this policy left students with a test or project in almost every class on a single day. Though this experience is now in the past, and it is clear that midterms are going to happen, I think we have an opportunity to reexamine our midterm and final exam system going forward to ensure this kind of stress is not replicated in the future. These assessments are administered for two reasons: to ensure that students have a comprehensive grasp on the course's curriculum and to prepare students for future exams at the college level. But I fear that we are failing on both fronts. Due to the lost time, some teachers are either rushing through material or skipping units entirely, entirely in order to keep pace leading up to the midterm period. Teachers should never be put in a position where they have to either sacrifice core, course content or inundate their students with piles of work at the end of the semester just to hit requirements for the midterm exam. Hopefully, this unprecedented loss of school time will be a one-time incident, but nonetheless, I think it should remind us all that the mastery of course content happens in the classroom, not by cramming for 105-minute exam. Midterms and finals should offer a value opportunity for students to take what they've learned and take it to a higher level by applying it. I've always been disconcerted by the prospect that midterms and finals prepare us for college finals. This notion suggests that the two are correlated, but the vast majority of teachers are not actively in contact with professors regarding what college finals are actually like. Here lies the greatest opportunity for policy change at Greenwich High School. Program administrators should be in contact with college professors, and midterms should be structured with their input. I think traditional high-stakes midterm I think traditional high-stakes midterm exams should be completely reevaluated and reimagined in the future to better align with the typical college experience. Maybe humanities classes have a take-home essay instead of a timed sit-down test. Maybe certain courses support students in conducting research or developing innovative cumulative projects. Students should not just master course content on a multiple-choice exam, but apply that content in creative ways. Midterms can be beneficial and less stressful to students, but we just need to change the way in which they're administered. As always, thank you for this opportunity and for offering your time here tonight. I look forward to speaking with you all in a month's time.
Thank you very much, Javi. Welcome, Sean.
Good evening, Chair Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the board, and meeting attendees. I am Sean Mirza, Vice President of Student Concerns at Greenwich High School, and I'm speaking in Kwame's place tonight. Thank you for having me. As you know, COVID mitigation strategies at Greenwich High School have increased considerably in January. These strategies are not substantive. For example, classes are run regularly in person, and that is safe with COVID. However, clubs have been forced to go virtual for the month of January, supposedly because of the surge of COVID cases, making it too dangerous. Clubs take place in the exact same classrooms, usually with a lower number of people. It seems impossible for the building to be safe for class during the day and not for clubs shortly after. Our administration preaches social and emotional well-being, yet they have deprived students of a key social interaction of high school, meeting for clubs in person. I wholeheartedly agree with protecting students and doing everything in our power to keep us in school. Nonetheless, I believe the same safety that has been achieved in our schools' basketball courts and hockey rinks can be reached within clubs and COVID mitigation for the long run. Clubs are usually a very small amount of students meeting during flex time, something that had been explicitly created this year in hopes of clubs becoming more accessible to all students. The inconsistent application of COVID mitigation strategies is frustrating to these passionate students who care about their community. It is disheartening for us to be unable to meet while wearing our masks and socially distance, yet see Plexiglas that has been proven to be ineffective brought back to our student center, or having a one-way glass corridor that makes us walk on the freezing cold, ice-covered sidewalks and down slippery, mud-covered hills. As we all know, COVID does not discriminate. And all I ask is that our administration be consistent with their stance on COVID, make decisions based on scientific fact, and reconsider these unnecessary and unhelpful mitigation strategies that hinder the student experience at Greenwich High School. Thank you again for the opportunity to share the students' perspectives and experiences with you tonight.
Thank you so much, Sean. Thank you. Next up, GEA Liv. She here?
I see Lil online. I just gave her talking permissions.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lil.
All right, all right. You gave me talking permission. You sure you want to do that, Mike? Okay, good evening, board members, teachers, parents, students, community members. I'm Lilin Peron, President of the Greenwich Education Associations. First, I'd like to start off with congratulations to the girls' state championship diving and swimming teams, and also to the GHS girls' state championship volleyball teams. Great job on your victory as state champions. A great honor. Thank you. I also like to thank Athletic Director Mr. Gus Landeen for his years of service to the Greenwich Public Schools and leading one of the best athletic programs in the state of Connecticut and supporting our coaches and all our athletes along that road to success. I wish you well, Gus. Well, welcome to our 2022 school year. Before I move forward to talk about the new year, I want to take a short reflection on over the past two years during our COVID. I think I like to call it something different, you know, maybe cookies or id. It just seems so much nicer. What have we learned? What have we achieved? We've laughed, we've cried, what we endured. Our essential workers have gone unnoticed, unrecognized, not giving the respect and honor they deserve until 2020, when the whole world did change. Our hospital doctors, nursing and medical support staff were saving lives. Our police, fire, and public works were keeping us safe. Our parents were doing the best they could to help with supporting teachers, their children, and the educational process during hybrid learning. Our dedicated nursing staff, led by Mary Keller, keeping our students and staff safe, along with long hours of contact tracing. Our custodians kept our buildings clean, our security team who kept us safe, our paras and all the support staff that showed up every day to support teaching and learning. Teaching, the most important profession on the planet. Yes, I'm biased, but I do have the microphone right now. A profession that has gone also unnoticed until 2020, when the whole world changed, and so did we as teachers. Our Greenwich teachers turned on a dime, rose to the challenge, and are still continuing to take on any new challenges. We pivoted. We went hybrid, the only school system in Connecticut to be in school all year. We learned technologies, new ways to teach. We Googled, screencastified, Schoology. We flipped grid. We figured it out. We did it together, many of us, with their own families to care for and children to teach at home. Now we start this new year, 2022, still enduring COVID, Omicron, and we continue to be professionals for our students, not only to teach them, but also to support them in their physical and mental well-being. Now, I know you all probably heard and were aware of the statewide teacher-initiated blackout by CEA, which GEA we do support for all schools in Connecticut to have their supplies, tests, mitigation strategies in place to keep students and staff safe. Teachers in Greenwich did participate in wear and black, but we did not do a full, organized teacher event. As I stated in the paper, it was just not the right timing for Greenwich. Greenwich Public Schools, we had our masks, we had our test supplies, and mitigation strategies were already well in place. But that does not mean the struggle still does not continue for our teachers. Teachers are still facing overwhelming daily struggles as they continue to persevere teaching at its best through this pandemic to provide our students with an outstanding, rigorous education. Teachers still walk into a minefield of challenges every single day, knowing, not knowing what's going to hit them next. How many staff will be out? What's going to change in today's schedule as a result? How many students are quarantined? Who tested positive? Who's okay? Are we okay? Are themselves exposed? Our teachers have proven that we can do great things. We continue to take on challenges that come our way. We are professionals. We deserve more than just praise. I like to thank our parents for our continued support. But I'd like to let everyone know, our Board of Ed and BET, that our teachers need more than just praise this year. Thank you, and let's have a great year.
Thank you so much, Lil. Next up, Representative from PTA, Mimi Duff. Is she online? I don't see her here.
You can hear me, yeah?
I can. Go ahead, Mimi.
Okay, cool. Good evening, Dr. Jones, Chair Stowe, and other members of the Board of Education. I'm Mimi Duff, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of all their members. I want to begin my comments by acknowledging our teachers, administrators, custodial staff, cafeteria workers, and others supporting the day-to-day operations of our school district. Thank you. We know the work you're doing has gotten harder, not easier, as we continue to navigate COVID with recent spikes in case counts among students and staff. We know our teachers are carrying an additional load as they cover for sick colleagues, et cetera. We appreciate you, and we would love to help in any way possible. Moving on to tonight's agenda, I have several comments. I'll start by giving a big shout-out to Mike Reed and the Big Ideas Math Implementation and the recent math workshop organized by our academic excellence team. We're hearing great things, so keep up the good work. In tonight's STEM report, we see goals to improve grades five and eight science scores, but we aren't seeing measurable goals in math. Specifically, the goals laid out for math teachers include teacher clarity, feedback, discussion, instruction, and practice. These all seem to be elements of an effective teaching process, but not necessarily measurable or time-based goals. We talk about SMART goals, specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. Without SMART goals, how do we hold ourselves accountable? There used to be a goal to have 75% of the eighth graders in the district complete Algebra I. Is that still a district goal? If so, where are we and what is the timeframe to achieve the goal? Goals like this could help inform the work on the strategic plan, for instance. Sticking to SMART goals and focusing on measurable, have the science and math scores improved at Hamilton Avenue since the start of the Steam Magnet Program? Why are scores missing on the update report? The progress column as complete or ongoing is a little thin on details. Onto the science research program. Wow, what a roster. Each of the accomplishments detailed in the report is more impressive than the next. It's no wonder that they wrote a book about Andy Bermonte's science research class. Why isn't this the district explicitly providing financial support for such an amazing program? As I understand it, the program largely relies on parent contributions and matches to the school for winners. Why isn't this program explicitly funded? Regarding a public comment, we don't support cutting public comment to two minutes. The public comment period is a chance for our elected officials to hear what our taxpayers and community are thinking and for others to listen to ongoing debates in the district. Our families deserve an opportunity to be heard. As an example of how important the comment period is, we can hopefully all agree that the independent sped review was long overdue and needed in our district. Without the parent comment and hearing the struggles and the individual stories of families in our district, would you, the Board of Ed, have made recommendations for an independent sped review? We need to continue to hear from our families, and we don't support a two-minute limit. Finally, it's budget time. We remain very concerned about the state of disrepair in many of our buildings and general lack of maintenance. We urge our elected BET members to tour the buildings in focus to help educate themselves. We look after our homes, and we are urging the BET to look after our students' home-away-from-homes in supporting our teachers, staff, and importantly, our buildings and infrastructure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mimi. Appreciate it. All right, so that takes us to community comments. A few people, I guess, dropped off the list, but it looks like-
Kathleen, can I ask a question before we get into the community comment? Would that be okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, well, I guess I'm assuming we're going to hear something about masks and other COVID protective things. So I just want to go over a couple of things if that's okay to make sure we're on the same page. The Governor's Executive Order still stands, which kind of ties our hands when making decisions on whether our kids have to and not have to wear masks or other protective COVID issues. That still stands presently.
That's my understanding, yes.
And I understand, too, that that executive order is scheduled to end, is it February 15th?
Okay.
Yes. So I just want to make, make sure we're all aware of this, everybody, because sometimes there seems to be some confusion. On February 15th, the responsibility falls on the Board of Education and local to the local Board of Ed to make decisions on our district on whether the kids have to wear masks or not and other issues relating to this. Is that correct?
I know. I'm not sure about that. It's going to either go to the legislature, which I'm starting to meet right now. Or perhaps an executive order, I guess, could always be extended, but I mean, that's-
Oh, no, no. Of course, I misspoke. So if the executive order ends, then I believe then we, we all meet and make the decision ourselves. Is that, is that the way it's going to work?
Well, sure. If the legislature does nothing, the executive, the governor somehow does nothing, and then it just comes to an end. Our policy did say that we would meet within three days.
So the legislators, the, the state representatives and the senators will get together and decide in Hartford whether the governor has the power to control locally our schools, the masks on the kids and things like that. So really, the, the decision is going to be made by the state representatives and the senators, whether they're going to give the, the governor the responsibility or the power, the executive order, to, to control this from Hartford rather than locally. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and one last point will be in a, if the executive order ends or his powers are no longer continue, then we'll all get together and hash it out, and then we'll wear the responsibility of the decision of the policy going forward for our local district.
That's correct. That's why we, in case that happened, we were smart enough, I hope, to put that in a policy that we'd meet within three days. Am I correct about that?
It's one, it's one week, not three days.
Sorry. I don't know why. Three days, one week. Okay, thank you. Thank you for correcting that. Okay, I've never been told I've been quiet, Mr. Kelly.
I just, I just wanted, I just wanted to clear up everything. That's all. So we know where we, because it is, it could be questionable time going over the next couple of weeks. So I just want to be able to address where we're going to go and how we're going to talk about it. And I encourage all of us to call each other, and I know it's a sensitive topic, but we should start talking about it earlier than later. I know the public meeting is probably, it's not timely to talk about it now, but maybe we certainly have to lay the groundwork for that and start talking about it as it gets closer to February 15th.
Probably. Why don't we go into public comment now before we kind of get off any more track?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, guys, now let's not lose control. Sorry, let's kind of go right into public comment now, and then we can bring up further stuff and committee updates. Okay, so with that, we appreciate everyone coming out. Glad to see so many people here tonight. I know we have many opinions and perspectives. We welcome them all. Let's just please try to keep it civil. With that, I'm going to do my usual where I call you up and then the next person so we could stay on track. First up, Ms. Jacquet-Holmen, please. All right, and after that, it would be Jamie Downs.
Good evening, Dr. Jones and Board of Education members. I'm here tonight to talk about a few new policies, starting with the proposed changes to Policy 9325 on public speaking and engagement that appear intended to limit our free speech. As I understand it, the primary reason for the proposed change is that you don't want to hear about medical freedom from the parents who have come here month after month to plead with you to change blatantly discriminatory COVID policies and to beg you to start following the science instead of blindly adhering to the false belief that a piece of fabric stops an airborne virus. It doesn't. Did you hear England just dropped all the mask and vaccine mandates yesterday? You seem to have adopted another new policy for COVID, one that I don't recall coming to a vote. This is the policy that requires some young children to eat outside in 28-degree weather with 30 mile-an-hour winds. Who made that policy decision? Another new policy of yours was to accept nearly $10 million in tainted funding from the Biden administration for ARPSER III. You previously told parents there were no mask testing or vaccine strings attached to the funding, yet the application submitted by Dr. Jones clearly says you plan to adopt the CDC's policies without question. The public wants to know unequivocally with the views of your legal representation, whether masks, testing, or vaccine strings are in fact tied to the money, because other parent groups have claimed that this is, in fact, the case. And by the way, did you know CDC changed its mask guidance last week? It continues to recommend that you wear the most protective mask you can, you can, that fits well, adding that KN95 masks offer the best protection. So does that mean that you'll be issuing KN95 masks to everyone in the district every day so that you can be in compliance with the SERIII funding requirement that you wrote for yourselves? Will you be deploying staff to ensure the masks are properly fitted according to the strict new guidelines or to ensure that the rules around the mask breaks are properly followed? Where will the funding for the KN95s come from anyway? I mean, it appears that the SERIII funds are fully allocated, albeit to some rather controversial initiatives, including transformative social-emotional learning. What is it about our children that you wish to transform anyway? Their morality? I don't recall ever giving any of you that responsibility to dictate the morality of my own children, yet you do it every single day.
Thirty seconds.
I lost two science classes last month to SEL training. I find it shocking that this money would be used in this, in this way, because it often draws on the ideas of social justice and anti-racism. Before you spend any of the SERIII funding, please confirm the stipulations with your legal team so that we're on the same page. Please consider working with parents instead of against us on medical freedom issues, and please reject the changes to Policy 9325.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Jamie Downs, followed by Cara Philbin. I think that's, is Downs coming down? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to comment on the proposed changes to Policy 9325, which includes several new restrictions on the public hearing portion of BOE meetings. I was surprised to learn that despite signing an oath to uphold the United States Constitution, several board members are in favor of restricting residents' free speech. What I can't understand is why are you looking to close the lines of communication? What I can't understand is why are you looking to close the lines of communication? If an effective homeschool partnership is the cornerstone of a strong educational system, why would you disenfranchise parents by silencing their voices? Is it not your job to listen to their concerns? Look, I understand it's time-consuming to hear from so many concerned parents, and I bet it wasn't always like this. In years past, you might have heard it from a handful of parents, and I bet the tone of their comments was a bit softer. But things have changed, and there are more concerned parents than ever before. And I can guarantee that attempting to silence them will not work. Perhaps the issue is that we're trying to squeeze too much into one meeting. Perhaps a separate monthly town hall-style meeting would give the Board and Greenwich residents the opportunity to engage in dialogue about issues impacting our children. Perhaps that would create an atmosphere of trust and cooperation. What's bothering me is that I haven't seen any proposals offering new venues for discourse. I don't see any online forums, invitations to committee meetings, or surveys. So I'm wondering, what are you doing to better understand the day-to-day experience of the students in this district? How are you measuring the impact of your policies? How do you gauge the public perception of the job you're doing? And if this is not the right venue to engage in these conversations, then what is? If not here, where? If not now, when? You named the time and the place, and I can assure you, parents will show up. That is, if you want to listen. If you want our children to be critical consumers of information, who appreciate diverse perspectives, then should we really be talking about limiting free speech and public discourse? Should we really be talking about turning off the mic when someone's viewpoint doesn't align with our own? No, we need to walk the walk. We need to normalize changing our minds when presented with new information. And not act as if doing so makes us somehow naive or spineless. It's on us. During my limited interactions with GPS parents, I've heard so many concerns, and my response is always, have you shared this with anyone? Unfortunately, the fear of retribution is-
30 seconds.
So I'm here today for two main reasons. One, to remind parents that the school board is here to serve us and our children. They're intelligent people with good hearts, and they want to hear from you, so speak up. Don't be afraid. And number two, I'd like to ask each of you to recall the oath you took to uphold the Constitution of the United States and reject the proposed changes to Policy 9325. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Cara Philbin. Followed by Carl Higby.
Good evening. I'm speaking for Peter Scher tonight because your new policy prevented him from speaking. The policy proposal to limit public engagement is not in the best interest of the public or the Board of Education. Board members should be opening up communication and feedback with parents, voters, and residents. The proposed policy change is in direct contradiction to Greenwich community expectations, national trends in education, and the BOE's own published strategic plan. For decades, public comments at board meetings provide constructive engagement with the board. All this changed four years ago when a new board chairman tried to change and restrict open communication with the public. Here are five specific best practices you should implement instead. One, publish all BOE meeting documents to the public and the board at the same time. There is no purpose to restrict or hide information the board members see. This means posting everything on the Friday before each meeting. Two, respond to email. If someone bothers to write to the board, members must respond. This means eliminating the dreaded "thank you for your interest" acknowledgement. Instruct the administration to respond to any email within 48 hours. Selectively replying is unacceptable. Four, write explanations for agenda items. This policy item has no explanation or rationale on the cover page as required. Five, remove agenda items that are not ready for discussion. No documents by Friday should automatically reschedule an item to another meeting. You can make your meetings more efficient and effective. Restricting public hearings and parent voice would be the wrong remedy and permanently damage the reputation of the Board of Education. Please rethink this PGC proposal. In my additional time, I'm going to read from a constituent. No to the proposed changes to Policy 9325. So I hear tonight the board is going to vote to censor the public. I hear the board wants to do this because they are tired of listening to the public comments, that they find the public comments too long and the public comments are too repetitive. They want the meeting to be shorter. When I mentioned this to some friends, one friend said, isn't that what they're elected to do? Another said, wow, they could always resign if they find listening to their constituents boring. Another said, if they don't like hearing about the same problems over and over, maybe they can solve the problems. Free speech, freedom of expression, is a fundamental human right. For our Board of Ed to vote to take away this right goes against every fabric of why they were elected. Any board member that votes to censor free speech has lost sight of their duties and has no place on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philbin. Next up, Carl Higby, followed by Kristin Nyman-Ski.
Yeah, just real quick on the mask thing, I want to point out, the last time we were here, Tony Jones told me that they follow CDC guidance, considering that Walensky just came out and said, hey, these paper and cloth masks are political theater and, quote, useless. So are we doing science here anymore? I guess not. So you guys, I'm trying to be as respectful as possible here, but I thought showing a bunch of seven-year-olds a cartoon erection was like the ultimate low point, but you did it again. And I find out that kids, including my daughter, are outside in 30-degree weather in 37 mile-an-hour winds having lunch. This is like completely intolerable. Again, not voted on here, just arbitrary policy. I reached out to Angela Schmidt, or Schmidt, and she said, well, you know, you know, I'll get with the nurses and we'll talk to the teachers, and she'd like spread the whose fault this is out. And it really bothers me because it's a bureaucratic attempt to absolve yourselves of any actual individual guilt. But there's eight years old. There's a small craft advisory warning on the day that she was eating outside, sitting on the ground. That's a problem to me. It's January in Connecticut. This is not Miami. And when I finally pushed her on it, I know some of you were CC'd on that thing and you responded, and I appreciate that. But she wanted to throw Mr. Hull under the bus. Now, Mr. Hull, I don't know him personally, but he's super favored in my household. He's a really good teacher. He's actually the only teacher that can ever get my daughter to actually like a book. He's not at fault here, because this is happening in schools all across Greenwich. It's a real problem. So I'd ask Dr. Jones, whose fault is this? Who made this call? No response. And this is the problem. There is no mechanism for dialogue at these meetings. I'm just asking a simple question. Who's at fault and who's going to be punished for it? How about we move your desk outside into the courtyard for the rest of the year? I'm good with that. You don't seem too thrilled about it. And you shouldn't be, because it's dumb! Just as dumb as these kids eating outside. That's all I'm asking. They don't have a choice. Teachers have a choice. They can go inside and eat in the warm place without a mask on. They can have professional development without a mask on. My kid's got to have this thing strapped to his face like a diaper all day. They go outside for five seconds, they get yelled at to put it back on during recess. This is outrageous! Let's start having some actual science here governing these things.
30 seconds.
We got to get our kids back inside in January. I mean, does anybody here disagree with that?
No.
So let's actually just move them back inside. February 14th or whatever, Joe, we'll deal with the mask mandate then. But I swear to God, if my kids are eating outside one more day, it's going to be real bad for you guys.
Thank you very much. Next up, Kristin Nyman-Ski, followed by Elizabeth Hopley. Here she comes.
I had high hopes for this somewhat new Board of Education, but unfortunately, it seems that the Board of Ed wants to be even more restrictive with parents' efforts to voice their opinions and concerns. I'm appalled that this is the direction you are going in. If anything, you should be doing the opposite. The Board of Ed should be welcoming of parents' opinions and input since you are making decisions regarding the education of our children. The three-minute limit on public speaking is already restrictive, and I feel it should be increased to four minutes. It's also very disheartening that I hear you're trying to stop parents from speaking about anything not on the Board of Ed's agenda. Since the Board of Ed controls the agenda items, this is an easy way to stifle free speech. The Board of Ed can purposely never put an item on the agenda that they know parents are concerned or frustrated about. This would help them avoid difficult conversations and make it to look to the public like there are no other concerns. The Board of Education exists for the education of our children. Parents should have as much input as possible when it comes to the education of their children. The Board of Ed should be completely transparent and open to more communication with parents, not less. I object to the proposed changes to Policy 9325 and propose that instead of becoming more restrictive, the Board of Ed should add a public speaking meeting or town hall every month where they give parents two to three hours to voice any concerns in a Q&amp;A session. This would show parents in the Greenwich community that you want and welcome their input and criticism, and that you are making a good faith effort to work with parents and not against them. Parents want an excellent education for their children with high standards and a focus on academics and consistency. We do not want social justice and political issues embedded in the curriculum. We also do not want schools making health decisions for our children. You are the Board of Education, not the Board of Health. You do not personally know my child. You do not know my child's or my family's medical history. You do not know how things like masks and push vaccines affect my child. The teachers' union and Board of Ed constantly talk about social emotional learning, yet you do not think twice about the social and emotional damage you are causing with your policies. You're creating stress, anxiety, depression, feelings of isolation, and segregation with your policies. And then you spend funding and steer everything towards social emotional learning to fix the very problems your policies are causing. Children do not want to be treated differently based on race, gender, skin color, vaccination status, or any other divisive measure. You're causing division where there should be none. The only factor schools should be concerned with as to how children are treated is their academic ability and their family's economic status. Some children need more help than others based on those two factors, not based on their race, skin color, gender, or vaccination status. Please leave healthcare decisions to families and their doctors. If special funding is tied to things like masks or vaccines, reject the funding. Funding should be redirected towards academics and away from school-based healthcare clinics and SEL. Go back to focusing on academics, consistency, and transparency.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nyman-Ski. Next up is Elizabeth Hopley, followed by Jackson Stack. Is she online? I don't see her here. Elizabeth Hopley. After that, it's Jackson Stack.
I'm not seeing her online. If she is online-
She's here. She's here. Thank you. Then next up is Jackson Stack.
Hi. So my name's Elizabeth Hopley. I've been a Greenwich resident for 14 years, and my husband and I have three children. I'd like to voice opposition first to the proposed changes to Policy 9325 to limit the free speech of residents. Also, your proposed changes would allow only one person, the board chairperson, to further modify these limitations at each meeting. Do you understand that you're giving your board authority to one person to make decisions for you? I would think especially with new members on this board that there would be interest and curiosity in hearing from the people who give you this authority. That said, please reject these changes, and if anything, expand ways that parents and residents can voice their concerns and make constructive suggestions. There are a lot of very smart people in this room and in this town, and you ignore them, it's only to your detriment. They're here to inform and help you. And inform you, they have, meeting after meeting, warning you of the harm of being inflicted on children due to mask mandates, quarantines, and coercive actions to promote COVID vaccines. A surgical mask is designated by the FDA as a medical device. Vaccination is a medical intervention. Even if you're a licensed medical professional, you can only recommend, not mandate, a medical intervention. You actually have no legal authority to recommend such a practice, nor does any administrator or teacher. This is practicing medicine without a license, which is a crime. Executive orders, health orders, mandates, none are actually laws. Laws are only for our legislature to pass. And no emergency order supersedes established law. Did you know the supremacy clause in the US Constitution states that any time a law contradicts the Constitution, it is actually considered null and void? Did you know that these mask mandates, quarantines, and coercion to vaccinate with an emergency use vaccine violate the Fifth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution? They are also a violation of the Nuremberg Code of 1947, which requires informed consent of the subject. Did you know that the Emergency Health Powers Act clearly states that the only way a person can be deprived of their rights is through due process, something protected by the Fifth Amendment? Quarantines, mass vaccines, they cannot be forced. In fact, quarantines and other forced medical interventions can only be enforced with a court order from a judge and with a diagnosis from a medical professional. Even then, one still has a right to a hearing. How confident are you that these orders are legal? Depriving children and parents of their rights is a serious crime, and ignorance of the law is not an excuse. Whether it's tainted SERIII funds that make you continue this or some other force, please, I ask you to step back, have some courage, and remember that you must do what's in the best interest of the children. These abusive COVID mandates must stop now. And the tides are turning. The UK just lifted all their COVID mandates-
Thank you so much, Ms. Hopley. Next up, Jackson Stack, followed by Illet Steinberg. Jackson online?
I'm not seeing a stack online. If they could raise their hand if they're online.
Okay, not seeing that. If he does appear, we can always come back. Next up then, Illet Steinberg, followed by Roger Rosendahl. Do you see Steinberg online?
Yeah, I'm here. Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Thank you.
People who make the effort to sign up and speak at the BOE meetings care about their children and community. If you don't agree with them, and even if you have heard similar issues before, the community has the right to be heard. Please do not make attempts to limit speaking at BOE meetings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Roger Rosendahl, followed by Frances Novak. Oh, thank you. Here's Roger.
Someone mentioned that we have some very smart people in the room. We've heard from a lot of them. I was, I'm very impressed by the presentations, I have to say. And, you know, Jackie and Jamie were spot on. And a couple of comments by previous speakers that sort of triggered me, my thinking, the Vice President and the student body raised an issue that I think has been overlooked in the COVID analysis, and that is the balancing of physical health with risk and other concerns that you've heard about here tonight, emotional, mental well-being. I don't see that balancing. I've heard governments say it's all about safety, not about freedom. If you infringe freedom, there is a balancing required. I haven't seen it. One of your board members referenced the executive order, and somebody else mentioned that we really need a legislation, or act, that you have executive order, as you see on the federal level, doesn't mean it's the law. That the legislative body is considering authorizing the governor to issue the order, says in itself, he doesn't have the authority until they do it. I have previously spoken against teaching our children to hate the country and themselves as either oppressors or victims. I've also spoken against the teaching of untruth. Had a bumpy, bad history. Slavery was terrible. Genocide was worse, but they're not here, Americans aren't here to complain about it. I've previously spoken about the importance of freedom of choice, including the ability to make the wrong decisions, and I made them myself. I did get backs, by the way, boosted under pressure from my millennial spawn. But they did tell me, it's your choice, and I made it. Tonight, I'd like to drill down on the Board of Education itself and the need for honesty, integrity, credibility, transparency, and accountability. It's a new board. Last October-
30 seconds.
Last October, someone on the board mentioned there's no link between federal funding and any actions to be taken. That was a false statement. It's flat-out a bribe to do what the feds want. It's, you know, a bribe- It's, you know, a bribe to go woke. That statement needs to be corrected.
Time.
Must be corrected.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rosendahl. Next up is Frances Novak, followed by Julie Farinaz.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Frances.
Hi, this is Frances Wu Novak, mom of three kids who thoroughly enjoyed today's day off. To honor and hold space for childhood joy, wonder, and adventure as we kick off a new year of Board of Education meetings, please allow me to share the nineteen sixty-two children's classic, The Snowy Day, by Ezra Jack Keats. These are our children. One winter morning, Peter woke up and looked out the window. Snow had fallen during the night. It covered everything as far as he could see. After breakfast, he put on his snowsuit and ran outside. The snow was piled up very high along the street to make a path for walking. Crunch, crunch, crunch. His feet sank into the snow. He walked with his toes pointing out like this. He walked with his toes pointing in like that. Then he dragged his feet slowly to make tracks. And he found something sticking out of the snow that made a new track. It was a stick. A stick that was just right for smacking a snow-covered tree. Down fell the snow, plopped on top of Peter's head. He thought it would be fun to join the big boys in their snowball fight, but he knew he wasn't old enough, not yet. So he made a smiling snowman, and he made angels. He pretended he was a mountain climber. He climbed up a great, big, tall, heaping mountain of snow and slid all the way down. He picked up a handful of snow and another, and still another. He packed it round and firm and put the snowball in his pocket for tomorrow. Then he went into his warm house. He told his mother all about his adventures while she took off his wet socks. And he thought and thought and thought about them. Before he got into bed, he looked into his pocket. His pocket was empty. The snowball wasn't there. He felt very sad. While he slept, he dreamed that the sun had melted away all the snow. But when he woke up, his dream was gone. The snow was still everywhere. New snow was falling. After breakfast, he called to his friend from across the hall, and they went out together into the deep, deep snow. These are our kids. Thank you, GPS team, for all you do every day.
Thank you very much, Frances. Next up, Julie Farinaz, followed by Graham Fatida. Sorry if I didn't say that right. I see Julie online. Yep, there you go, Julie. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. First of all, Frances, that was awesome. Anyway. Good evening, Chairman Stowe, Chairwoman Stowe, Dr. Jones, members of the Board of Education, cabinet, PTA, and community. My name is Julie Farinaz, and I am the Executive Director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. The Alliance is the only nonprofit in Greenwich, one hundred percent focused on our public school students, teachers, and alumni. Yesterday, I mailed thirty-seven scholarship checks totaling fifty thousand, two hundred dollars to colleges and universities for avid alumni who recently applied to our Avid Success Scholarship Program. This brings our annual investment to a hundred and ten thousand, and overall, since two thousand and thirteen to six hundred and fifty thousand. These students are an impressive bunch and intend many Connecticut State Schools and schools out of the area like Emory, URI, Fordham, Rochester Institute of Technology, University of New Hampshire, and more. They are majoring in business, neuroscience, psychology, nursing, communications, computer science, and are working jobs while attending school, are in leadership positions on campus, and are self-advocates. They take Cornell notes and have plans to attend graduate school in the future. They credit their avid teachers, the avid program, the support from their families, and their Greenwich Alliance Avid Success mentors for their accomplishments and academic achievements attained so far. Avid works. The Alliance, as mentioned last month, is here and help, is here to help with its expansion to to the elementary schools and encourages the prioritization of designing a true role for the avid district director to focus on the needs of the student population and further address the opportunity gap. Reaching out grants is the Alliance's granting program that awards teachers, program coordinators, administrators, staff, and community partners who have innovative ideas to change up the educational experience for all students. To give you an example, one of our current grants is called Unbound Innovations XR and is championed by Gaspar Lapari at Western Middle School. The Alliance's investment of a hundred and fifteen thousand in the technology and software over the last three years has made it possible for Mr. Lapari to teach students from all academic areas to experience
Thirty seconds.
content using virtual reality and augmented reality. This technology and software is the future, and we are happy to make this possible. Grant applications are now available on our website and are due on March twenty-fifth. Think big, everyone. Happy twenty twenty-two, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Julie. Always great hearing about the Alliance and all the wonderful things they do. Next up is Graham Fatida, and I'm sorry if I'm saying that wrong, right there, followed by Dan Quigley.
Hi, Graham Fatidad, eleven-year Greenwich town resident. My eldest son went through ten years of Greenwich Public Schools. I never once emailed the Board of Ed, nor had much more than parent-teacher interviews with anyone at North Myanis, Eastern Middle School, or Greenwich High School. We moved here because of the school system. We were grateful for the educational environment that was provided until COVID. On Tuesday, and all of you know this as I emailed you, my daughter's class was sent outside to eat lunch. It was thirty-three degree weather with a twenty-five mile an hour wind. Real feel, twenty-two degrees Fahrenheit. There was no choice. They were told to go outside. At what point does the risk of these children contracting pneumonia supersede COVID? What about the dangers of falling branches or falling ice? Are we going to be worried about these kids' safety? Last week, her class was told to eat on the floor in the hallway because the cafeteria was too full. These are children. They're not dogs. And to be fair, my dog gets to eat inside. These children are being treated like criminals. The CEA and their nine-point plan, supported by the GEA, seeks to institutionalize a prison mentality in Greenwich schools. Temperature checks at the door to enter the school, symptom checks, and N ninety-five muzzles on our children. I implore the board to stand up and say no to these measures. While the principal of the school has responded to my concerns with the option of my daughter eating in the cafeteria, separate from her classmates, what about everybody else that's being sent outside to eat? It's not just my daughter here that doesn't like this. And it's not fair that my daughter now has a choice and all of the other children don't. Further, it's not just North Myanis. My wife walked by Dundee yesterday. It was only forty-two degrees Fahrenheit, and kids were eating outside there. The question is why? Why, if the cafeteria is full, can they not eat in their classrooms? And by whose standard is the cafeteria too full? Why should they sit on the floor in the hallway? Why should they have to go outside in winter weather? Is it a misapplication of procedures? Is it COVID fears? There may be no easy answers, but there are simple answers. Have the courage to do what is morally right. Protect our children. If the staff can't deal with COVID fears, replace them. If it's bad procedures, fix them. If you need someone to come in to supervise lunch, put out a request. There's lots of family members around this community that are very happy to come in and help out.
Time. Thank you very much. Next up, Dan Quigley, followed by Susan Diana. Hey, Dan, can you keep your mask on? Sorry, it's a rule we have to school.
Apologies, yes.
No worries.
Dr. Jones, distinguished members of the Board of Education. I wanted to come in person tonight to say a simple thank you for your hard work and dedication and commitment to the children of Greenwich and our community. The last two years have been, have brought with them unprecedented challenges and obstacles for our Greenwich Public Schools. And the road from March twenty nineteen to today hasn't been easy or smooth. But because of your work and the work of our dedicated teachers, educators, and administrators on the front lines and in the trenches, we've seen a GPS persevere. It is important to remember that our Board of Education members are all volunteers. They are concerned citizens who spend an inordinate amount of their own time working hard to look out for the best interests of our schools and our children. Although we have seen school boards become increasingly politicized nationally, each of you deserve our thanks and our respect for your service during these particularly unique and difficult times. This is especially true when one considers the very high bar of difficulty with which some of you have had to work through over the past two years. Dr. Jones, as a parent of a GPS student, I'm grateful for your steadfastness in keeping our kids in school. Most of the other superintendents and surrounding areas did not. This has, in my opinion, been the single most important decision made during the pandemic, and its biggest beneficiaries are the children of the Greenwich Public School system. I thank you for that and your hard work. In closing, it isn't easy to make tough decisions in public position. Bearing the brunt of public criticism goes along with the territory. No one decision will please everyone, and every single decision will ultimately be questioned. Each of you carry the great burden of the well-being and the education of the children of Greenwich. You all deserve the respect of our community for the job you've done. Thank you for your efforts and your dedication to service.
Thank you very much. Next up, Susan Diana, and she'll be our final speaker on Lex Jackson Stack as we emerged. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Diana, and I'm a proud mother of three young boys, two of which go to North Myanis School. I simply wanted to speak tonight to provide a counterpoint to some of the other views that have been expressed here. My appreciation goes far beyond any other passion that I might have for the school's administration, particularly Angela Schmidt and Kathleen Smith Ramirez and the entire teaching staff. The amount of stress they have been under the last two years cannot be overstated. They have not only had a deadly global pandemic that has killed over eight hundred and fifty thousand people nationwide and counting, but also a collapsed ceiling, subsequently having to find temporary schools for half the school. We, as parents, need to continue to support our schools, support our administrators, teachers, and staff. They have kept our children safe under shifting state and national guidelines. We must shift the narrative so that our teachers, our administrators know and feel that they are supported. We must not let the toxicity that is spewed in these meetings permeate our schools. I'm here to represent the majority of Greenwich parents to say thank you to all our teachers who have shown bravery and perseverance throughout the last couple of years, despite the negativity that seems to be constantly thrown around. Thank you for your selfless acts. Thank you for keeping our kids safe. Thank you for everything on behalf of the majority.
Thank you very much. And not seeing Jackson Stack online, we will now end, conclude public comment. Thank you for everyone coming out. Let's now turn to the monthly reports. First up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair. So I also want to start tonight just congratulating all of our student honorees and guests on his retirement. It's, that's, that's really why we do what we do, is to be able to celebrate our students, and sometimes we don't get enough of that in these meetings. I also want to just say congratulations to Eastern Middle School, who are opening their musical today, which was, and a special thanks to Dan Watson and his staff for managing to figure out how to get the building open so that could continue tonight. They, that's something that they had missed, obviously, in the height of COVID, so it's very exciting for them. Also, just a reminder that the budget presentation to the BET is on January twenty-fifth. It will be a virtual meeting. As it stood as of yesterday, those who are wanting to make comment, they're not actually doing the comments live. You have to write into the BET. But so that's where it was as of yesterday. Also, just a quick update that I've heard, we have heard quite a bit of conflicting on the daily notes that we send out for each school. Some people really rely on them. Matter of fact, we had about three days or so where we didn't do them at the high school, and we really heard, why are you not doing it? Where are they? And then we'll have other emails where parents are like, can I opt out of this? Please stop sending them. Because they're just, they're COVID tired. So tomorrow in the newsletter, there will be an opt-in that parents can opt in. It'll be one note every day that has all of the schools on it. And that way, people that no longer want to receive them won't have to get them. And it'll only be those people who really want it. So thank you to Jonathan and Mary Keller for working on that for us. That will start next Monday. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Kloski.
Sorry. So there's been a couple of comments and a rash of emails regarding, you know, just children in general eating outdoors. And I think it would be nice to have some follow-up, just to be able to respond to some of those concerns with respect to what is the current policy and practice? And is that going to change in light of the, you know, just regular or the conversation that we've been having here to suggest that it's not such a good idea?
First of all, those decisions are made every single day all year long at the building level. And obviously, it's guided by if it is above freezing. That's the first and foremost. And if children want to go outside, and generally, when it's above freezing, children do go outside. Parents send them in coats, send them in gloves. If for some reason they didn't have what they needed to be outside, then a teacher wouldn't just take them outside. In regards to lunch, one thing during COVID that actually a lot of our students have enjoyed is they've increased a lot of the outdoor spaces. Now, do we want to take them out if it's thirty degrees? No. And the children were not out in thirty-degree weather. Was it, I think it was around thirty-four, thirty-five, about one-thirty in the afternoon. And that is one of the things that staff did check whenever we heard from the parent. They're inside a courtyard. So it was important to note, too, they're not sitting out on an open playground. They're inside a courtyard. You really can't feel the wind. There aren't big tree branches to fall on children. There aren't big icicles to fall on their heads. They were inside. So I say that because really, K-12, our kids eat outside. If you go to the high school, you'll see kids sitting out front, you know, all bundled up in their gear when it's pretty chilly. Elementary is much more guided by the teacher, working with the nurses, working with the principal. And they, and you've got to understand, too, the teacher is there with them. Our teachers don't want to be outside, you know, if it's really so cold and it's uncomfortable.
Excuse me, this is not a back and forth. Thank you.
So I think it's
Enough. Thank you.
So there really is no set policy. It's guidance that you would find across the United States. When I was the elementary principal in nineteen ninety-eight, that's what we did. You look and see, what is the wind chill? What is the temperature? And you make really good common sense decisions so that children can actually get at some outdoor. Kids like to be outside. So these teachers, and there were several of them, there were several of them that actually ate outside that day and felt that it was very comfortable.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kloski, do you have anything further?
Yeah, I just, so I generally have
Okay, we actually, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kloski. Yeah, go ahead, please.
No, I just, I generally have some concerns with, because not every situation will be the same on every given day, and nor is every outdoor space the same with respect to corridors. And so I guess there is a concern with going outside, because I do realize going outside and getting fresh air, even on cold days, is perfectly, is perfectly fine. And if they're going out and they're playing kickball, that's great, because, one, they're getting fresh air, they've got their jackets, their hats, their mittens, all that stuff on. They're also creating energy and heat by moving around. And when they're sitting still, eating their lunch, I would think with their gloves off to eat food, it's an entirely different situation. And I know a lot of kids have a fear of speaking up and saying, I'm cold, right? They don't really recognize that. I know I go skiing with my kids, and I'm constantly asking them, are your feet cold? Are your hands cold? Because it's just not something that they're readily thinking about until someone actually asks them. And I think there's a difference between sending them out to play versus eating. I'm also in the fact of what the question that hasn't been answered yet is, why can't they just eat in their classroom? I understand that there may be an overload with respect to the gym or the cafeteria where they're eating, but why is the classroom not an option?
It is an option, and teachers all across the district eat in the classroom. They, for instance, the building that was referenced tonight, they don't even use their cafeteria for lunch. They use the gym. It's a huge, big space. And there are, it's such, it's one of our, it is our largest building. So you use the gym. You also use the classroom. They're on rotations. It's not the same every single day. They have a schedule. They move around. They can't eat in the room. And a matter of fact, one of the teachers that was referenced, like, they generally will sit at their desk if they're inside. You know, they have the shields up. Some teachers will let kids picnic because they want to sit on a towel. You know, they have the shields up. Some teachers will let kids picnic because they want to sit on a towel, which they've done for two years, on a towel, or they may want to sit on their coat because they want to be in a circle on the floor with their friends. So it is classroom-specific, and it depends on the spaces, and it's a daily decision.
Yeah, Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I got a bunch of kids. And if any of them were young little kids, like some of the references earlier on, and they came home and described this situation as being uncomfortable and bad, I guess I'd be a little annoyed. So what I'd like to do is, instead of further elaborating on the issue, let's talk about how we're going to solve this problem, because we have to be more sensitive to the kids. Of course, if it's some temperature, I don't know whether it's 55 or 45, or certainly at 75, it's fine to go outside. But let's try to have a discussion where we're sensitive to the complaints we're hearing, and try to figure out how we could make some sort of rules to the number of schools, or suggestions to be more careful about this. Because to Karen's point about the kids, when they're young, they might not be able to communicate well to a teacher. So as I said, if my kid came home and they were young, and they had a problem like that, you know, I'd want to hear a solution rather than kind of talking about it. I'd like to say, let's kind of get together and figure out what we can do to solve it.
And I'm happy to have that conversation with the elementary principal team and see. But what I just want to reiterate, when it's above freezing, kids do go outside, and they have forever.
Okay, Michael, oh, sorry. Michael Joseph, you're next, and then Ms. Hirsch.
Yeah, I don't want to, am I on? Okay, I don't want to repeat what Joe said necessarily. I agree with it. I think convening the elementary principals and talking through these things makes sense. They, I think actually it needs to go beyond that a little bit. I think we heard a couple of examples here of, you know, we heard the comment tonight about the importance of balancing COVID safety, and we get that, with all of the other concerns that we're facing, that the kids face at school day. And, you know, quite frankly, it surprised me when I heard this week that elementary kids were eating outside. I mean, I'm in schools every day. That was news to me. Not, you know, the third grader shouldn't be eating outside in 30-degree weather. It just shouldn't happen. It makes, but I think we need to talk through that. But then we also heard, you know, from our high school students very thoughtfully this evening about clubs. And they made a very thoughtful point about if it's safe to have classes with masks on in school, why are clubs virtual? So I think that conversation about that need the balance, it's an ongoing thing. We know that. This is, everything has changed in COVID. Every month is different, and we know that. But I think we need to continue to have that conversation at all levels, and see where we can balance out the needs of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Hirsch?
I think I'm just going to probably reiterate what Joe and Mike and Karen had said. You know, I know I'm not a fan of eating outside when it's 30 degrees. Ask Ms. Costin. We have heat lamps when we eat outside at that weather. And, you know, while this is not a policy, this is something that might be a regulation or something that's deciding, decided building by building. I appreciate that you're going to go back and convene with the principals to have this discussion, because, you know, I think parents are often surprised when their children come home and mention something. I would also fall back on saying that this might be something that should probably be communicated to parents, saying, you know, if we are having children outside not just for recess, which makes perfect sense, they need the opportunity to get their ya-yas out and run around. But if they're sitting outside to eat, parents may want to send them with warmer clothing or whatever it might be, or opt them out. So my point simply is, is if there are changes to their daily schedule like that, if they're going to be eating in a different manner, it might be helpful just to communicate that, so parents have an understanding.
Thank you. Ms. Costin?
I guess my next question is, do we not have adequate seating in the alternative spaces where they're eating? So that, I don't understand why they're eating on the floor in a hallway. I mean, I know on pajama day, my kids want to sit on their sleeping bags in the classroom on the floor and eat pizza with their class. But, you know, on the regular, I feel like we should have some proper seating, even if they're in the hallway, like outside, central, outside the gym, there's seats for the children if they can't be accommodated in the gym or the cafeteria. I just feel like we should have proper seating in the alternative spaces where they're eating.
Yeah, every building is different, and all of the cafeterias are set up wherever the cafeteria is. Some of them use alternate spaces also for cafeteria, so it just depends on the building. But they do have seating. There are teachers that, again, choose to just eat in the classroom at their desk. It's different depending on the size of the classroom. Is it 650 square feet, or is it, you know, an 850-square-foot classroom? And every building is different.
I was going to say, this is, you know, children in three different schools, and all their lunches are completely different in terms of how they're, one's here at Central, one's in elementary, one's in the high school. Of course, we all know the high school's done a few different iterations, given the up and down. So it sounds like something that we should look at. I agree with everyone. I'd like to, oh, sorry, I have another question. Go ahead, Mr. Kittle.
Yeah, just one thing I wanted to add, a different angle on this is, I think what's unique about the situation we heard about tonight is, if this is as common as Tony described it, then maybe that makes it all the more egregious that whatever judgment or lack thereof the teacher was exercising resulted in, you know, this sort of feedback. It's not like there's a steady debate over this, and there's people coming here advocating for lunch outside in the winter. And once again, I don't think anyone would advocate for that. So I just, it seems like a particularly poor example of judgment. And the question I wanted to ask is, if that's the case, what do you think should be done from an accountability standpoint? Because I think more broadly, when we think about the way this board governs, you always have the choice of saying, well, let's make a blanket rule that affects everybody. Or you can say, you know, we're going to trust our teachers and our administrators, but then when they make bad decisions, hold them accountable. And I was just wondering, how are we approaching this one?
First of all, you have to really figure out what happened. It was not 30 degrees, and there was not a 30-degree wind chill. We have, we have several teachers that actually, on that particular day, chose to eat in the courtyard. And we certainly can go.
Mr. Higby, please.
We can certainly review that. But I think that to say that a teacher's poor judgment when we weren't there, the principal was, the principal could see the courtyard. We will have a discussion. Obviously, this board would like it to be a higher temperature than that. It's not something they do every day, but they do try to get kids outside when they can. And on that particular day, they felt like it was okay. So I don't think that we sit in a place to be able to judge when we were not there. And there are several adults that do a wonderful job taking care of our children, including the principal.
It sounds like something, okay, go ahead, Mr. Kittle.
Sorry, I just, maybe it sounds like we don't agree on the quality of the judgment. What could we do to figure that out? Is this something where we could talk to the other parents in the class? And because what I'm interested in is, there's a chance that this was bad judgment from the teacher. And so what mechanisms do we have in place to hold someone accountable when they make bad choices to the detriment of the student? Assuming that's the case. And then the other question would be, how would we get to the bottom of this? Because this seems like something worth further evaluating.
We, I work with the principal. First of all, it's at a management level and how a building is managed. The principal does, she has received emails from other parents who have heard about this that don't agree with the viewpoint that was presented tonight. So, I mean, we do talk to parents, and she's very, very good about that in her building. You know, as far as accountability, if there's something that was really egregious that happened, but that was not how this was perceived from the teachers, again, it's not just one teacher. There are a couple that day that actually made the choice to eat outside in a courtyard that is surrounded by the building. And they felt like it was okay, but we will review it, and we'll follow up.
Sounds like that's a good plan. Just so you know, when I was, I got a text from a BET member that we have to correct one thing that you said, Dr. Jones, let me get it up before I get it wrong. And that was, live comments are allowed at the BET budget meeting. Just have to use the raise the hand function, because they cannot come in person.
We will be sure and put that out, because we did reach out and check on that, and that was not what we were, what was shared. And it was not what was posted online. So we will work together to make sure our parents know.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you.
Yeah, because I got that same note.
Yes, Mr. Kittle.
One more comment, doesn't need a follow-up, but I'm slightly troubled by the idea that the way we evaluate whether someone did something wrong is asking that person if they feel like they did something wrong. So I just, something for all of us to reflect on is, it is a challenge, but how do we come up with ways to determine when something doesn't feel right? If it actually wasn't right, when the folks who we first go to are often the ones implicated. Even the principal has an interest in, you know, defending the actions regardless of the merit. Yeah, I don't need a response. I just wanted to share that for the board.
Okay, I wanted to, sorry, I have a question. Okay, Ms. Downey, I'm sorry, I'm switching topics.
I was, yeah, I didn't know you were going to other committees.
No, I was going to midterms. I still see Javi here and Sean, right? And I know I have many constituents of my own, but also many parents and children that I'm hearing from. What are we, how are people generally responding to the midterms? I know we can't do anything about it now, but these two guys really echoed something that I'm hearing a lot about, which is, we're rushing through the material. Of course, there was a snow day. We've had a lot of kids in quarantines, teachers in quarantines. Subs are teaching new material that are going to be placed on the midterm. And this is certainly adding to the stress level of many of these students. There's probably not much sadly we can do about at this point. It seems like they're starting on Tuesday. But I do really think that this is something we should be talking about, and the administration should be focused on, because I see the stress levels of these students going up, and it's not okay.
Yeah, I mean, all I can say is, from my level, I've only heard probably from one or two people. So I don't want to put Ralph on the spot, but he may be hearing, you know, more than I am. I do know they were trying, they tried to be very thoughtful to bring a plan forward that would meet the needs of different students. Some students are on the cusp of increasing their grades, so not having a midterm, or not having that waiting option was concerning to them. We had other students who had been out with quarantines, and they had makeup work, and we're supposed to be working with those students. And again, if you want to ask Ralph to chime in, he may be hearing more than I am.
Sure. Ms. Downey, did you have something further on that?
Yeah, actually, I actually think they came up with a great solution, because I think it's been a couple of years that these kids need to know how to take a midterm. We're doing them a disservice if we just eliminate them again. So by finding a compromise about the weight of it, I think was a really effective solution. But just on the topic of midterms generally, given that my kids are a lot older than, I think, a lot of the other board members in the room, the issue of midterms has come up repeatedly over the years, how we administer them, the notion of how they're done, the process of midterms. So this is not a new topic. It's just a little variation on it this year, and perhaps, thinking of it for next year, the administration at the high school could start talking about, okay, if this is, if it keeps coming back every couple of years as a, why do we do midterms? Why do we do them this way? Really, not really, why do we do them, but why do we do them this way? I think as an educational matter, it would behoove us to take a deeper dive, for them to look at it, the professional educators, because it has come up, as I said, my kids are older, and it was coming up five, 10 years ago. So this is not a new topic, guys. So it won't solve this year. But I think on a going-forward basis, we can examine them generally.
Absolutely. Okay, Ms. Hirsch?
I did want to echo some of the things that I heard in XCOM and from our student leaders that were here today. Yes, it's exceptionally important for our children to be able to take midterms and understand the rigors and how to take tests like this. My college student had come home and said, if my daughter doesn't learn how to take a midterm, she's in trouble when she gets to college. But at the same time, I am hearing from a lot of students, much like our student leaders, that said that teachers are trying to rush to get into material taught that's going to be on midterms, that I'm hearing from students that some sections of classes are two or three units behind, and some are, you know, and so midterms are going to be different for every student. And I think that that's sort of a very difficult and added stressful way for our students to kind of go into this with the fact that we've not had a full week of school. And I really urge you and the administration of the high school to take a look at this. And if there, you know, some classes that are three or four units behind, then that is where that information should stop. Because, you know, when children are waking up to a snow day and panicked because their teacher's desperately trying to get through a unit that they know is going to be on a test next week, it is very stressful for them. The anxiety these kids are feeling, just in general, is through the roof, and we've got to do something to support that.
Do something. Go ahead, Cody.
I wanted to just advocate for perhaps a different approach, which is, I think the information available to teachers at the high school is they're closest to the situation. I'd be very reluctant to do some sort of blanket midterm policy coming from the board, unless it was related to, you know, a broader change in our philosophy, you know, supported by academic research or something. But the idea that a handful of students feel stressed, which is probably not a new phenomenon for high school students, means that we should have some kind of blankets reaction. I would, you know, I feel like this is something that maybe we want to keep our hands more off of than on.
I was just suggesting, Cody, that the administration of the high school do it, not us.
Oh, yeah, sure.
By the way, the policy did come specifically from the administration, not from us.
Definitely not in our purview.
Yeah, I.
Ms. Kloski?
I was just going to say, I agree with Cody on this. Yeah, I think that implementing the midterms and putting them back in is a good thing. And I agree that there are probably stresses in the fact that it has been gone for two years, and now all of a sudden comes back, is an added stress. And I am, I do think the administration probably, and Ralph and the teachers have the pulse of their students. I hope so. That's their job, and understand and can appreciate and get them through this. I think these are all about life lessons for kids and important aspects that they need to learn to deal with, which is taking tests, being under stress, trying to figure things out. Look, do I worry about overstressing kids? Of course. And there is, there's a line, and it's a fine line, and it's hard to navigate that line. But at some point, we have to let the process work, and I believe, and I have to trust in the administration and Mr. Mayo and the teachers, understand and appreciate, because I know that they all, all those teachers extend themselves out and are readily available to the students for those that have questions. And I, you know, implore, employ the students to go see their teachers. If they have a question, go ask it. Make sure you're prepared in the best way possible, because life is going to throw curveballs every day of the week, and you got to know how to deal with them. And these are the ways to learn how to deal with it now, when the consequences are less severe.
Thank you. And I was going to echo Ms. Downey, that you were right to do it, that I think it was, the administration did a nice job of trying to find a balance by doing sort of the greater of, hopefully making, you know, improving your grade, not bringing it down. So with that, can we move on to committee updates? And I'm just going to go, sorry, yep. Can I go in order, or, go ahead, Mr. Kelly, or no?
Mine's quick.
Ms. Downey?
Actually, as we sit here, Planning and Zoning is going to vote on the high school entryway design tonight. So hopefully, we'll have an email, a happy email to all the rest of the board tomorrow, and we have a building committee meeting at 8:00 a.m. So let's not go too late.
Well, so far, we're sticking to our agenda and timing. Okay, Mr. Kelly?
I have to apologize in advance. I've got a lengthy report, so bear with me, please.
See, I cursed myself by saying we were on task. Okay, go ahead.
I'll move quick. Cardinal Stadium. We, there was an issue with the state DOT, which we talked about last meeting. And we have solved that problem, so we are in a good position to get our permanent TCO, which in itself sounds a little strange, because the permanent temporary certificate of occupancy sounds strange. But it's the step before we actually get our C-VO. So it's good news. The next is sort of a different topic. It's making some good out of a tragedy. We, about a year ago, we lost, passed away, one of our boys, lacrosse coaches, and Chris Andrea and his wife Jamie, after he passed, had set up the opportunity to donate money to what he had such a passion for, which was sports, especially lacrosse at Greenwich High School. So the goal for Jamie, his wife, was to raise as much money as she could for Cardinal Stadium. Now, as we all know, Cardinal Stadium was funded by public funding, and basically, we didn't take any private funding. So in multiple conversations with Jamie, we tried to understand some of Chris's passions. Broadcasting was one of his passions. So Jamie wants to donate a pretty fair sum of money to help us create a classroom-type broadcast setup for our kids. Ralph Mayo's son Sean had started the broadcast club some years ago, and we're. And we're allocating one of the seven press boxes to have a permanent classroom for, uh, for the kids to use to learn the craft and skill of broadcasting. So, uh, the, uh, Jamie, uh, hi- his wife and, uh, and Sean will be meeting to discuss the equipment they're gonna order, uh, which she's gonna donate. Uh, we will then follow through with the amount of the donation and hopefully the board will approve that donation. So that's another one of the Cardinal Stadium related projects we're working on. Uh, next is the emergency road, uh, also phase two called. I don't know if we've officially changed the name, but I like to call it the emergency road or impact. We, uh, we had a Zoom meeting early in the month with all the principals in the town, uh, all the agencies, all the groups, anyone who have anything to do with the, uh, the stadium, uh, with us, sorry, with the emergency road. We've, uh, went over an alternative plan, uh, which we put in, we worked on and designed, which we had to do anyway. Uh, so we can't blame it all on the, uh, on, uh, on Greg, our tree warden, uh, Kramer. But, uh, but we did the alternative plan anyway because the town wanted us to put an alternative plan together anyway. We went over the, the alternative plan with the various agencies in town. And, uh, our professionals have suggested that we stick with the original plan we had. So there'll be a very little change, uh, from the original plan we approved, uh, two years ago. Some of the, uh, little change is that, uh, that Jim Michael, our chief engineer, DPW, suggested it would make a lot more sense for the buses when dropping off students to Greenwich Cardinal Stadium, that they enter on the route one side rather than come through the parking lot at the school. That gives the buses the opportunity to park in the parking lot and they can simply drive around and drive in the route one, right turn in, right turn out, rather than coming in through the parking lot and going out the right turn, having to go all the way to the center of Greenwich to then turn back around to come around. Because most buses will be going on I-95 and heading north for, uh, most of Connecticut competitions. So that's the only change, which is not a significant one, but that's the only difference from the, uh, from what we approved. So therefore, I, I don't believe we need to re-vote on that. And we do have what could be, or what we will have to call ed specs. And at this point, I think we have to, uh, uh, submit that to, uh, the, uh, the selectmen, uh, committee, uh, for a, uh, for a building committee. So I think that's where we are with that. Three waterfall project. Uh, we, I'd mentioned how this is progressing. Uh, we got a lot of support from our local public officials. I was told there were some issues with the waterfall project, uh, that were state related and some local. So, uh, we got support from our Senator Ryan Fazio, Steve Meskis has showed tremendous support. Fred Camilla, our first selectman, said he's a 100% behind this. Our select men, uh, or select people, Lauren Raven and Janet McGuigan also said that they're 100% behind this project. I trust the, uh, my fellow Board of Ed members will also support this project. The BET, because it's not funded, uh, by public funding, it's private funded. I think that they, uh, they will also be very happy about that. Uh, the first part of this project will be cleaning up what is an abandoned lot. It almost seems like when you first drive into Hillside and you look over and see that, that garbage and debris and clutter over there. So first step would be, we have a, uh, we've got a topo donated to us from, uh, from Tony DeAngelo, uh, DeAndrea, who's, uh, given us, uh, the, uh, uh, the surveys. Uh, we have a landscape designer who's working with us for free. We have a, uh, a, a person who's donating dumpsters. Our first selectman said he waived dumping fees and I believe we can get the students at Greenwich High School. Certainly the teams will get together to, uh, uh, to help do the phase one, which is clean up the mess that is there right now. And then after that, we'll discuss landscape design and authorization. Now, I understand, uh, Tony, you got a call from somebody in town who said we might have some challenges with this. Is that correct?
Basically, almost all of the town departments have reached out about concerns about this project.
If you, if you could, those ones that actually reached out, could you call them back? And I got authorization from the names of public officials, uh, that I just listed. I'll give you that list again, that you can mention all their names when the town employees, uh, say that they, uh, uh, they're not in favor of this project. And each of these people that I just mentioned said that I can use their name and then direct them to those elected officials of both, uh, the state delegation and our local officials. So maybe they'll change their tune to, we can't do anything to maybe tell us what we can do. And then maybe they can tell us what we have to be cautious about. But at least they can understand that we have the support of all the elected officials, both at the state and locally.
I, I can certainly do that. I think probably a pre-meeting, uh, to figure out what the challenges are would probably be better. Because most of the state delegation don't actually understand what happens with the depth of knowledge. Somebody like Amy, who's head of, you know, Public Works, has on the soil issues, uh, what sort of testing, what we're, what we may run into. There is something to do, and I don't know if it's with deep or EPA or both, uh, where initially when that waterfall was put in, they had to have certain types of plants. It has to do with the water runoff. So there was something that was submitted at the state level. So I think they would have to do some research and it, it's really getting probably a big meeting of everybody to kind of do some research to figure out what are, what are the requirements on the property and what are, what, what we can and can't do.
Okay, I get that. And to me, some view those as challenges. I view those as opportunities. So let's go into and move, try to move forward on it, use the strength and power we have at a, on a project that I think everybody's behind. So, uh, instead of people telling us no, I don't like when people tell us no when an obvious project makes sense to do. So, uh, uh, so I think we're gonna rally the troops on this and try to fix that mess. So that's my take on that. I'm done at that point. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Yes, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, before I get to my, uh, committee updates, I had a quick question for Mr. Kelly, um, with this fantastic waterfall project. I don't know if there's stuff that's being donated, if it's considered, you know, in kind donation. But I assume much like when we have gifts that are given to us, we just need to, I don't know if it's something and I'm gonna ask otherwise, if they need approval by us. Because if it's over a certain funding, uh, so even if it's a don't, being donated, it might be a gift in kind. And I don't know, I mean, we can refer that to policy, but I don't know if that's something that we would need to just approve. I'd love to be able to give recognition to those who've been so kind to step forward, uh, i- if this project can go forward and so forth.
Yeah. Okay. I guess, sorry. Um, okay, Ms. Costin.
Is the, is the gift threshold the same for the Board of Ed as the town? Five thousand?
Yes, I believe that's right. Yeah, five. Mr. Kittle.
Uh, this just reminded me that I think at some point we should revisit the gift policies for schools. Wanted to raise that. I think those comments just remind me that I think it's a relevant subject to look at.
Go ahead, Ms. Downey.
Can I just ask, okay, examine the gift policy, but to what? I, that's pretty broad. You know, with, with what in mind?
Yeah, that it might be overly restrictive currently, the idea that we miss out on opportunities to take funding from people that would benefit uh, schools, students, et cetera, because of onerous restrictions.
We, we can still accept the gifts. They just have to go through an approval process. So it's not anything that is more difficult for them. It's just working through our processes that with the towns limitations.
God bless you. Yes, but I understand. I, Mr. Kittle, I know what you're talking about. We've talked about, talking, having that come up in policy as it relates to larger donations or fundraising and things like that. And, um, I know we discussed it a little bit when I was on the policy committee, but it's something that we should also consider referring back to the policy committee again. Yes, Mr. Kelly.
I agree, uh, Cody, to, uh, to address that one. I know that I've personally had some interaction with people who were interested in donating some, uh, uh, something to the school. And, uh, it's, it's not abnormal to slide a bunch of documents in front of them, asking them to fill it out and have a tripocut signed and notarized and all that sort of stuff prior to them to actually making their donation. I, of course, exaggerate, but basically that's kind of what we want to get past and make it easier for somebody to give our schools, uh, money and accept donations. So I think, I think readdressing that policy would be fantastic. Thanks for bringing that up, Cody. I do appreciate it.
Very good. Uh, gonna keep going here on the officer reports. Sorry, Ms. Hirsch.
I just wanted to say, CAC met this, uh, month. And, um, they've had a, a slight change in chairmanship. I wanted to thank Dawn Zimmerman, who is the chair thus far this year, as she is stepping down for her time and dedication. Uh, and welcome back Carolyn Lamrum, who has voted back in as chair, and Naomi Nova, Naomi Nova, who has voted in as the vice chair. There was a quick update on some, and discussion on some of the audit, um, updates from Dr. Higenthaler. And I also wanted to note that Jenny Reynolds, who is heading up the enrichment committee, um, is, has suggested a list of topics for parent forums and, and meetings and is certainly open and welcome to new ideas as they are starting to look to put together, um, you know, different param, parent forums and workshops and so forth going forward. Also got an update on the professional development that is happening, uh, based on the changes for IEPs from the state of Connecticut, uh, which will not be going live, I believe, until July 1st. But, um, our staff is all being trained in the new IEP procedures and documentation. And we got an update on that. So I'd like, I just wanted to share that. And, um, the textbook math committee has been unfortunately stymied with several snow days because we have been unlucky enough to have presentations on all of those snow days. So we are, uh, they keep getting moved. So I'll have an update after we have another, uh, another presentation.
That's good. Michael Joseph.
They, um, very exciting, the, our strategic plan committee, uh, met for the first time, um, yesterday. As, um, as you all know, um, our strategic plan, uh, expired or was, was scheduled, it was 2015 to 2020. So, um, we needed to get moving on revision of the strategic plan. What we're, what we're hoping to do, or what we will be doing is we'll be bringing to the board, um, at our board retreat, um, in the first week of February. Well, it's with agenda items, so we can talk a little more, more fully about the, um, the direction that we're hoping to, to, to go as far as how best to revise the strategic plan. Uh, we're not looking at replacing the strategic plan. I think there's consensus, there's consensus on the committee that there's, um, Dakota Cowan, there, there's some good bones there. We have a thoughtful vision of the graduate. We have a lot of thoughtful ideas there. The, um, the idea is how can we, over the next, over the course of the winter and spring, um, working with the community and working with our administrators and teachers and, and people throughout the system? How, how, how can we, um, strengthen and rehone and focus strategic plan such that it aligns with a lot of what you just heard from PTAC tonight, actually? Where you have this concept of a stretch goal, this big goal or big one or two or three big goals over the course of five years that we're working towards. And then in between, every year you have SMART goals, specific measurable, time-bound, realistic, rooted in, um, quantifiable, student, um, data, um, student, uh, student achievement data, um, so that we can measure progress towards the, the, the stretch goal. So that's a, that's a, that's a very brief overview. Like I said, the whole idea is that we're going to be talking about the how, how the draft timeline to get the full board's in, input on a draft timeline of that, um, at our retreat next month.
Sounds great. All right. Seeing nothing else. Let's move into our meeting. And we were going a little bit out of order tonight because we're moving an action item, as you could see, it's different than usual. As I believe, Ms. Downey, we have, uh, council joining us. Um, so why don't we, could you put this on the table?
Yes, I guess I have to, I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt policies four zero 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 point one and five one four five point four four as presented.
Um, I'm happy to second that.
So the board may recall, these were given to us as a first read in November when we had, um, a number of new board members. So we've put them on hold till tonight. Um, so we've already had a first read and they're on for action this evening. Both of these policies relate to Title IX, um, which I think everyone's familiar with. It came about because PGC, in the process of kind of reviewing various policies and procedures as we've moved over to the CAE model and looked at, uh, they had a list of required and recommended policies. And we decided obviously to start with the required. And the PGC realized we really did not have these Title IX policies in any proper form in, in place, and they are required under various laws. So we brought, this is why we brought them forward. We, these are policies that were drafted by our outside council. They have not been altered in any shape or form in terms of the language, other than putting in names and contact information. So, um, we've had a great fidelity and we trust in our expert, um, counsel at shipment in Goodwin. Andrea Belik, Andy Belik, who is available with us on Zoom this evening to answer any questions. But, um, four thousand point one relates to staff and five one four five point four four relates to students. So ultimately we can move them as separate items if board members want, but I wanted to give, I would think it's helpful if Andy gives, if, if people would like, uh, present a short just explanation about why these policies are required. So can we elevate, is, is she elevated onto Zoom?
She is. She just has to come off from you. Thank you.
Hi. Nice to be with you all. Um, yeah, I'll be very brief. Title IX, uh, of the education amendments of 1972, uh, requires, um, uh, public schools, boards of education to, um, adopt policies, uh, of non-discrimination on the basis of sex. And this applies both to staff and to students. And, um, so what you have before you and, and, um, in the past year, uh, the Title IX, um, regulations have been changed and those have been promulgated. And so, uh, there is a need to, um, uh, update also to ensure that you're compliant with, um, uh, the law and including those regulations. So the, um, policies that have been given to you are, uh, just that. They are, um, they are a codification in essence at the local level uh, of the requirements of federal, um, and as well as there's, um, uh, state law referenced as well, the, um, non-discrimination, uh, statute in Connecticut of 1015, uh, C. Uh, but they're really just the codification of legal requirements, uh, on the, um, board of education and on the, uh, school system, uh, relative to non-discrimination.
Ms. Kowski.
Sure, thanks. So I don't really have a, a question, Andy, and I appreciate the fact that you and I have had conversations and you were kind enough to send me, um, some additional reading materials. And I have voiced my concerns with several of you on this, on the board with respect to this particular policy. And I'm relating to the policy regarding students. I have no problem with not committing sexual discrimination. I don't think anyone on this panel does have a problem with not committing sexual discrimination. My problem with this particular policy is the fact that it not only protects against, it, it goes beyond what Title IX was identified and, and why it was created, how 40 years, well, probably more than that, 60 years ago. And my problem here is that this reads so broad as to allow for students that are born biological, we'll go, we'll just for example purposes, students that are born biological male and transitioning and playing on girls' sports teams. So as a woman, and as a woman who played sports her entire life and still pretends to play sports at my age, and a mother of three daughters, all of which who play sports, I have problems with this. I understand that it is that Connecticut passed a law regarding this. I also understand that there were two young women in, who competed in, uh, high school sports. And I believe track or cross, cross country, uh, were denied the, the ability to, uh, win championships and denied scholarships because they were competing against boys, biological men, males who were, um, transitioning to females. There are no rules or guidance provided by CAC or the state of Connecticut that governs how this works. And this doesn't protect, Title IX was intended to protect women, and this doesn't protect young girls. It gives the opportunity for young girls in sports to lose out on opportunities that they would otherwise have been afforded. And it gives, and it also denies them the opportunity. And it gives, and it also denies them the opportunity to win and achieve college scholarships. We've seen this in the press quite some time. We're experiencing it now. With respect to the N C double A swimmers. And today in and of itself, the N C double A Has come back and said it needs to have a policy. It needs to have a program. It needs to have more rules governing this because Women are being sidelined. We have fought for so long to be treated as equals and now all of a sudden we're not. And I'm not going to stand for it. I don't care if it's Connecticut law. But somebody has to stand up for the young women who fought, who have, who deserve to be protected. The state of Connecticut doesn't provide any guidance with respect to the way the Olympics committee has done this. And now the way the N C double A is doing this. And I do not think in good conscience, we can go forward with a policy That allows for biological boys to compete on Female athletic teams who are biologically stronger, bigger, faster. Until there are some other guidance. And so from that point on, I do cannot, unless there is a carve out that can be provided That protects young women in, in sports. I cannot get behind this.
While I have experience in sports. I have, I realize I've been gifted with a voice. And I have spent a large portion of my life representing the underrepresented. And, uh, in, uh, in using this big voice. So I'm sympathetic to the underrepresented. But I have to agree with Karen on this topic, having the experience in a, I understand I'm being told. Look into it further and maybe further advice from, from our attorney on this topic. It, it's a law, but I, I can't agree with it. I, I think it's, I have three daughters. I spoke to my wife about this prior to coming here, who she is an athlete. She still competes competitively in sports at, at her age now. And she was so passionate against this topic. And I have always thought it was unfair. So I, I, I feel compelled to voice my opinion on this topic and agree with Karen. And as I said, I, I, I make it a very important part of my life to be, use my loud voice to the underrepresented. And I understand this group is underrepresented, but I, I just don't think it's, it's safe and, and fair. So that's my opinion.
Ms. Downey?
Believe me, I, I share the concerns of Karen and Joe a hundred percent, but this policy Goes, is way beyond what we're talking about. It also is sexual harassment. It, it, it's It addresses a number of different things. It's not purely an athletic policy. So I just want to be clear for people who haven't read it. You know, other than the eight of us, we're talking about a very general broad policy, which happens Because of the way it's drafted to include the concern that Ms. Kowalski has. Now I'd like to go back to counsel and just talk about, because we did talk about trying to find a way to craft this In a way to satisfy these concerns. But we weren't able to do so. So I don't know if you can address that and, and the implication of not having a policy like this in place, please, Andy?
Sure. So I, I do want to address just a, a few things. First, you know, the board acts as an entity when it adopts a policy. It is not a statement of the values of individual members, the beliefs of individual members. It is a, really a reflection of a requirement to adopt a policy that is consistent With the current law. And, and to clarify what the current law is. The Title Nine is interpreted and enforced by the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. They issued a notice of interpretation in June of twenty twenty one that made clear Their position that the non discrimination provisions include transgender students. There was a lawsuit filed prior to that notice of interpretation. There was a lawsuit filed in the state of Connecticut in the district court, the federal district court. And that lawsuit was dismissed. It was a challenge by student athletes against the C I A C rules that permit Transgender athletic participation. Those are eligibility rules of the C I A C, which is your governing body for interscholastic sports. And that lawsuit was dismissed. And although it is currently on appeal by those plaintiffs. There has been no change in the law here in the state of Connecticut. In addition to Title Nine. You have two state laws that protect individuals, including students From discrimination on the basis of gendered identity and expression. And the State Department of Ed and the Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities Have referenced the C I A C requirements in connection with that. And, and so, you know, I What I can say is that boards of education in the state are, they implement the educational interests of the state. They are an agent of the state. They are required to adopt policies, rules basically that govern their operation of schools. And one of the, most of the policies, to your point, most of the policies you adopt are required. This is one of them. And it certainly is both a requirement of state law that you enact policies, the rules in compliance With the law, but it is also a requirement of Title Nine. That you enact a policy that is compliant with Title Nine. And so I, at this point. The United States Department of Education has made clear in its notice of interpretation That this protects, Title Nine protects transgender students. What I can say is that, you know, your policies can be updated if there is a, if there is a change to the law. Policies are updated all the time. But to not have a policy could be problematic legally. Either with the state or federal authorities, including the United States Department of Education, the State Board of Education, The Office of Civil Rights of the United States Department of Education. And there certainly have been times that The Office of Civil Rights also engages The Department of Justice if it has concerns about enforcement. So I do just, you know, there are, this is, this is a legal requirement On the board from the Title Nine regulations, you must have a policy in place. The policy has to be compliant with the law as it stands today. And both state and federal law require the Board of Education to adopt policies that are Reflective of the law. Again, it's not a, the policies are not a statement of the values of individual board members. Or really the values of the board itself. These are required policies that reflect essentially a codification of federal and state law at the local level.
Andy, I just have a quick question. We have a policy in place that says that this board is required to follow the laws Of the state of Connecticut. So why isn't that sufficient enough? Give, and rather than having to go into this specific detail?
Because the federal law for Title Nine, the regulation requires the adoption of a Title Nine policy.
Where, can you send that to me?
Sure. CFR, section one oh six point A subsection B.
I just put a pen in my hand.
Sure, sorry. Thirty four CFR, section one oh six point eight. B, little b in parentheses.
So Andy, quick question here. Said simply, since I'm not a lawyer, we basically have no choice but to adopt this policy as it is. Is that fair?
Requires that you have a policy in place and that it is disseminated To employees and students. So you do that through a variety of means. And so you have to have a policy in place. And the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, as well as State Department of Education. Have authority in connection with any non compliance.
So, okay, so my personal view is of no matter. Is that fair?
Well, so here's what I'll say. I don't, I don't want to say anybody's personal views are of no matter. I, Board of Ed members never give up their right to free speech. But the board as a whole acts as an entity. And that isn't necessarily a reflection of any one member's personal beliefs. In this, in this matter, the Board of Education as an entity must adopt a policy that's in compliance with the law. And again, you know, it isn't that these policies, Whether it's this policy or it's a policy that you're required to have on the administration of medication in the schools or a policy. You know, any number of the policies that you're required to have. They really simply are at a very local level, right? A reflection of the laws you are required to comply with and enforce.
Mr. Kelly?
I'm just a little bit confused. Sorry. Maybe I'm not keeping up. So we're having a vote normally. They told me this when I first joined the board. You get a vote of yes, a vote of no, and you could abstain from voting. So what you're saying here is we can only vote yes, and we don't have those other two choices right now?
I, I'm not saying what individual board members can do. I'm saying the entity must adopt a policy that is in compliance with the law. And I'm saying that a vote of, that the, that the Board of Ed policy is not a statement of its individual members. It is a policy of the Board of Education. I hope I clarified that.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Hirsch. I'm sorry, Michael Joseph.
So, so Just out of curiosity, so what would happen if we, like, what kind of jeopardy are we in if we don't? Like, what, what happens if we, if we, if we adopt a policy that is, that is, that is not in compliance with the law? The, you know, we take the principled stand here. We put a line in or we amend it in a certain way. That obviously doesn't necessarily, we know doesn't agree with the law. What, what, what are the consequences of that?
So I think the, I spoke earlier about the Board of Education being responsible for Implementing the educational interests of the state of Connecticut in that regard as essentially a state agency. There are procedures in which the State Board of Education could Determine that the board is not meeting its statutory obligations under ten. There's a complaint procedure under ten four B and the State Board of Education could take action Against the, the Board of Education. In addition, the United States Department of Education through the Office of Civil Rights and/or the United States Department of Justice. Could take enforcement action in connection with non compliance with Title Nine. There's also the possibility of, because you receive federal funds, there could be implications for your federal funding. And there's also the possibility of individual claims relative to non compliance.
Mr. Kittle? All right, sorry, Ms. Hirsch.
You know, I had spoken with Karen, Ms. Kowalski, and I, and I understand the concern. It's a very sticky wicket. It is something that is currently in the court system here. You know, but reading over this policy as many times as I had, it is, it is not specifically outlined here. It is very much a policy specifically speaking against sexual harassment and discrimination, Which goes to a much broader and wider Discussion so that our students and our staff walk through the doors of our schools And feel part of a community. They don't feel discriminated against for a multitude of different things. You know, I'm a big fan of being in compliance with the law. But, you know, I, I understand the concerns and I, and I do see that this is, this is a much wider discussion And broader discussion that is something that is not just taking place at this local board. It is certainly seated in higher powers such as the state board of, you know, this is state legal system and beyond. But, you know, again, I, I think not having something like this in place harms far more students and staff. Than having this in place for a very small, not small. An issue that is, is rare and does not, is not commonplace on a daily basis. In that regards, whereas sexual harassment and, and discrimination happens on a, on a far more broad basis daily. You know, that, that's just my, my ten cent.
Mr. Kittle?
Yeah, before I say what I was going to say, just a clarifying comment based on what Karen just said. Is, is it the case that if we don't pass this policy, sexual harassment is allowed or permitted? There's no protections that strikes me as a bizarre interpretation.
Andy, could you answer that?
Sure. So you're required under the regulation promulgated by the federal Government, you are required to have this policy in place so that the procedures can be adopted And used to address, investigate and resolve complaints of, of sex discrimination or sexual harassment. So I, I, I don't know that I can Say that the absence of a policy is saying that yes, sexual harassment is allowed. I don't think that's the case. However, the, the Board of Education is required Under the federal law to adopt a policy that is in compliance with Title Nine. So you have to have a policy That prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex under Title Nine In place. And then you have to have procedures related to that. And those are promulgated by the administration As set forth in the policy, but you have to have the policy in place.
Yeah, that, I think that was the question I had. I guess maybe I can phrase it differently to something that will answer itself. I don't think any of us believe that if there was a case of sexual harassment today in one of the schools that we would not be able to address it. What I was going to say originally is, uh, I would encourage my fellow board members to reflect on the importance of federalism In separation of powers as a founding principle for how our government is set up. And that, you know, compliance with the law can mean different things and that the law is constantly evolving And being reinterpreted both by judges and through legislative processes. I think if we see something that we think is morally wrong, we can play a role in correcting it By standing up against it and letting these processes, you know, work their way through the system. I don't think we're doing much, I don't think we're doing any harm. We're just allowing for something like that to play out. And if down the road we say, You know, this is costing too much with lawyers or causing other issues, we can reevaluate it. But I think that our system is designed for different governing bodies to object To one another and to not get steamrolled when, especially over, you know, moral issues.
Could I just say, Dr. Jones did talk to the policy committee that we have had incidents Which then bring to bear the questions about our policy from students and their counsel and their parents. So I don't know, you know, it is an occurrence that we do deal with. And it's my understanding that we are then asked as a, as a school district, what is our policy? And what are our regulations in, in the, in the, in a typical sexual harassment, sexual discrimination base? So the lack of having something might concern, you know, is obviously a concern that then that opens us up to a different set of problems, right? And I mean, it's back to kind of, we were talking about balance earlier about, you know, COVID risks, right? The, the That you have to look at the whole picture, that the number of incidents Of other types of sexual harassment or sexual discrimination may be more not, I'm using voluminous is the wrong word, but more frequent Than where the concern is. And so on balance, you know, what's the better approach? I mean, and obviously we each have to vote the way we believe is the right way to vote.
If I may say one other thing, the C I A C rules on eligibility Permit such participation. So the only other So the only other, I was asked the question about the possibilities of what ifs. It certainly is possible that a school district that does not comply with the CIAC rules may not, depending on how the CIAC views that. I don't know whether the CIAC would permit continued participation in interscholastic athletic events if there is noncompliance with their rules and their policies. And, and so I just do want to point out, it's not just the United States Department of Education. It's not just the state laws and the State Board of Education and the board's responsibility as an agency of the state. But there could also be implications relative to participation overall in athletics, depending on how the CIAC interprets its own rules and, and the penalties or consequences for noncompliance that it issues.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, I, now I'm, thank you. I, I'm, I'm more confused than I was when I came in the room. So basically, I believe, Christina, you mentioned something, maybe I misheard you, that you're able to separate this policy into something which we can, we're all okay with and then one?
No, I, what I was saying is that we have a student policy and a staff policy.
So we can't vote on the staff?
We can vote on each policy separately. And we need to vote on, I think, I would say, based on the discussion, we would vote on, that each, we'll vote on the staff and we'll vote on the students.
legality, and I'm thinking perp walk and all that sort of stuff. I'm like, well, I don't want to go there. So I'm all confused. I'm not a lawyer. I don't do lawyer stuff very well. I usually have people do that for me and I, I don't want to get myself in trouble. So is there any?
That's why Andy's here.
But thank you for what, I'm sure what you said made sense to somebody, but it certainly didn't to me very well. So I didn't really understand exactly what you said. Sorry about that. It was just me. And so is there a way we could vote on one and put the other one off to another time so we can gather more information?
I think we should vote on it tonight because we're already, two meetings in, kind of arguably three. So I think we should take a vote, see where the vote is, and then we'll go from there, regardless of outcome.
Ms. Kowalski?
Is there any way to put in a, I, I don't want to put in a carve out because it's the wrong way to play it, but something that specifically addresses this type of situation that could be dealt with on a case by case scenario so that it can be evaluated? Because I certainly, look, if there is a, a student that is transitioning in one way, shape or form, certainly they're going through enough in their life, right? And, and they don't need any additional burdens. My whole point here is that everybody needs a fair shot and a fair playing field. And doing, and doing this without any guidance or parameters for which this would happen does not level the playing field, does not create a environment by which there is a competitive field. It, it, it just doesn't. And so the fact is here, and maybe we're just leaps and bounds above everybody else, or maybe everybody else isn't just bold enough to speak out about this and is offended as, is as offended as I am about this. And I think there are some other members of the board that are. But to say that, we're not saying, no, never. We're saying it has to be dealt with a case by case basis, addressing the issue, putting a policy in place to deal with the occurrences of sexual harassment that, for which Title IX was intended to protect and dealing with our legal obligation. But also addressing the fact that this, if this does happen, that we address it in that specific context to make sure that all of the stakeholders involved are listened to and make sure that they are protected.
Ms. Hirsch?
I'm having a very difficult time with this conversation. It is our responsibility to protect those that need to be protected, for students and staff to be able to walk in the doors and feel comfortable and protected and know that there's a policy that speaks to this, that our regulations, you know, lay out what happens. Cody was talking earlier about consequences. Consequences are important to understand. I have a female athlete in my home. I have a male athlete in my home. I have not ever been in a transgendered body. I don't know what that feels like. I can't even begin to imagine. But I have plenty of friends who have children in that position. I do not feel comfortable being the arbiter of what occurs in that place. And I, I think it is a very difficult position to put all of us in at this point. It's, it is not outlined in this policy in that way. It is something that, you know, it is, again, it's in the state courts right now. And I think if there is a change, that is something that we should immediately then address. But, I mean, and I can ask our, our legal counsel, you know, in, in the past 10 years, how many times has this situation occurred? I literally can only think of two or three times. I just feel that it is our responsibility to make the decisions for the majority of our students without negatively impacting the minority of different groups. And I just, we are behind in having this approved for quite some time. And I just feel very uncomfortable not having it there to protect those, the majority of our students and staff if they're, you know, if they have some kind of issue in this regards. You know, not in sports, just in general life.
Michael, Joseph?
Yeah, I, I think we might be getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. I think we should move towards, towards a vote here. I agree with Christina. I think we have to vote on this policy. And should it go down, then Christina's not going to like this. Then I think it's incumbent upon the policy committee or some kind of ad hoc committee to try again and draft something that, that reaches approval. But I think we might be getting ahead. I think, I think we probably should move towards a vote.
Ms. Costin?
I don't, I don't remember seeing a transgender policy in this read. Is this a?
It's just generally on the basis, like, if you look at what the definition of the protected?
Correct.
Okay. I was just, I think we should split up, we can split the policies up. I was just going to say, I have a, I hear you, Karen. I, I am, I went to the University of Notre Dame and I'm an athlete. Of course, I wasn't good enough to play division one sports, but I appreciate the, the role of women having an opportunity. Having said that, this is a very, I am much more worried. Let me put it in a finance way, so maybe Cody can understand it. There's a risk reward here. And to Karen's point, we are at a 0.000001% scenario that we're talking about. And we need to protect ourselves against the 99% sexual harassment scenario. It sounds like this is the law. I'm not, there are a lot of laws I don't like. In fact, I do not like speed limits because I unfortunately have a heavy foot. So, but, you know, I have to follow the law. So I, while it's not necessarily how I feel personally great about for a very, but it's the 0.0001% scenario that, you know, maybe it'll change one day and then we'll have to address it again in policy. And that's for the courts to work through. But until then, I'm a little bit more worried about leaving us exposed as, as a board. And, and that worries me a little bit more. So can I ask you, I, I really, really, we're trying to conduct our meeting. We were very respectful of you. I'd like that to continue. So, thank you. So go ahead, Ms. Downey.
And I think just to ask counsel about other districts that have gone, that have not adopted this. Are you aware of any or, I mean, just kind of, could you give us a little background?
No, I'm, I'm not aware. So we represent the majority of Connecticut school districts. And Connecticut school districts, I've not aware of any Connecticut school district that has not adopted a policy in compliance with the current Title IX law. What I can say is that there have been challenges in other states to boards of education that have adopted laws that have restricted access to, for example, bathrooms or locker rooms. Those lawsuits have been heavily fought. Those challenges have been successful to those board policies. And there certainly has been legal exposure to those school, to those school districts through school boards that adopted such policies. Just, somebody had raised, and I, it's hard because I can't see everybody well on my screen, but one of the Board of Ed members had raised concern about sort of the risk. There was one additional risk that I did not mention that I probably should just, you know, kind of worst case scenario lawyering, which is that, as you know, you all are, you, each of you is indemnified and the Board of Education is indemnified for, against, and held harmless against lawsuits in connection with your official activities. There is an exception to that under 10-235 of the Connecticut General Statutes, which is anything that is willful, wanton or malicious. So again, I'm, I'm not suggesting that that is in play right now here. I, I will just say that the law, at this point in Connecticut, given the dismissal of the, of the Sewell case and the fact that it is currently on appeal and presumably we will get an answer from the Second Circuit on that case. The current law is, you know, for this point in time, is in fact in this state, stable. We will await the decision of the Second Circuit on the Sewell case.
Okay, so Ms. Downey, would you like to now separate the policies?
Yeah, so why don't I, we'll call the question. I'm going to start with the staff policy. How about that?
That's a good choice.
Savvy play, it's numerically lower. I'm going to move that the board adopt. Chair, I think we do, we need to.
Do you have to draw the initial motion?
I withdraw my initial motion. I'm going to make a motion that we approve policy 4000.1 in the form presented.
I'd like to second that.
Is that the staff?
This is the staff policy, correct.
Okay, can, we now have a, do you want to do it in?
You don't, she seconded it.
Please second it.
You could do it on a voice or a hand vote.
All in favor? Okay, that passes 8-0. Go ahead, Ms. Downey, next one.
I'm going to make a motion that the board approve proposed policy number 5145.44 in the form presented.
Anyone seconding that? Ms. Hirsch? Okay. Okay, so that's 4-4, so it does not pass. I'll pass it 4-4. No. If someone had seen it, it would have passed, but not a 4-4. Okay. Anything further, Andy, or?
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I, it is important to, to adopt a policy. So I'll leave you with that. It's a legal requirement. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay.